John?
Yes, how are you Greg?
Did you get my email?
Yes, I did.
How's Disneyland?
Not my favorite place.
No?
Well. Oh, it's crazy. I, we've avoided it for about thirty years and finally, the family all wanted to do it kind of one all in, you know, college age and anyway, they're having a blast and so I found hell and sort of in the quasi lobby area where I could get wifi.
There you go. Well, I went back in the sixties and actually met Walt.
It's just crazy. I mean, the crowds are just unbelievable. They have a thing which we bought where you can dial in on your phone and reserve it's, you know, ride or, you know, something or other. And that works really well if you don't have to stand in long lines.
That's nice.
So. Anyway, I'm too old.
Don't they say you're always a kid when you go to Disneyland? Isn't that the?
Oh, no. It's kind of a circus. Like I said, you know, we were here thirty years ago and when our kids were younger. But never been here with our grandkids. It's kind of a mob.
Hello, everybody.
Michael, how are you?
Hey, Michael.
Hey, John, how was your vacation?
Still on it.
Nice. That's a good vacation.
Yeah. Well, we have a place down at San Clemente on the ocean and so it's, that is a great. Really not. Right now, the crowds at Disneyland, kind of a, I got outvoted.
Well, it happens. I'm sure the other director. I'm sure the other directors got the email that Director Bates will not be in attendance tonight.
I get that, but.
I didn't see that either.
I didn't either. Okay.
Yeah, darn. Okay.
Like three in a row.
Yeah. Actually, it was sent just to me, so.
Yeah.
It is seven PM.
All right. Welcome to the Maraga and Fire District Regular Board Meeting, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. I will call the meeting to order. Marcia, could we have a roll call, please?
Director Bates is absent. Director Dan Ziger.
Present.
Director Jack.
Present.
Director Jorgens.
Present.
President Donner.
Present. We'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. We'll move on to the consent agenda, items two point one through two point six. Any directors have any issues with any of these items for discussions?
Just direct to Dan Ziger. If, if I want to ask a question, do I, on just very something simple, should I pull it?
Say that again, Director Dan Ziger.
If I, if I want to ask a simple question on, on something, should I pull the item? Do we need to pull it? I guess we do, huh?
Yes.
Only if you're not going to approve it because you disagree with it.
Well, I do want to ask a question. Yeah, so I want to pull the, I want to pull. I'm just looking for a minute. Let's pull two point three and two point four.
Okay. Is there, is there anything that you want to discuss now?
Well, how about if we, how about if we approve the others and then I'll turn into my page so I can find it? Can we approve the others first?
Sure.
Okay.
Do I get a motion to adopt two point one, two point two and two point six?
I'll move.
Thank you. Marcia, can we get a vote, please?
And I'm sorry, I missed the, it was Director Dan Ziger who motioned. Is that correct?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Director Jacks.
Jackson, then Jorgens.
Thank you. Director Dan Ziger.
I.
Director Jacks.
I.
Director Jorgens.
I.
President Donner.
I. And just to be clear, Marcia, we are not adopting two point three and two point four just yet. Director Dan Zinger has a question. Just want to be clear that you have the numbers correctly.
Thank you.
Yep. Director Dan Zinger.
Oh, you want me to ask some questions now? Is that what we?
Yeah, so we can.
Before we, okay.
About this and move on.
Okay, so on item two point two point three, this is a question for, for staff. I just want to check something kind of related to another report we're going to do later, but on two point three on the, like response time summaries and incident types, are those reports that come from DNI?
Yes, sir. The DNI has runs an algorithm, specifically Steve Rogers, that produces them on an automated basis, but the underlying data is derived directly from RMS.
From the, from, so from the data that we collect?
Yes, sir. From the reporting, report management system, which is where all of our report writing is done by the company officers and the BCS or the, the acting company officer.
Okay, and so I guess my question is, I'm not proposing anything now, but maybe for later, if we wanted to change, say, the, you know, we response time summary report, we could customize it even further or take something out or add something, we could talk about it?
Yes, sir. All of the components that are in there as a result of prior board direction.
Got it. Okay, pri- even, probably even just prior to us, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that, that was the only question I had on that one. Just for future, and I did have a question on the on the check voucher register. This is just kind of a general question. I noticed on this on this check register that we had, you know, I don't know, maybe seven or eight volunteer uniforms. So is, how is that determined? Who, who gets a uniform? Is it, is, I don't know if there's a policy on that, is that?
We have members of the communications support team two forty-one. We have a budget item for that. We have a limited number of people who are in those positions. They're disaster volunteer service workers are enrolled into that program. So it's, it's for people who are formerly members of our established volunteer programs.
And if I'm not mistaken, Chief, these are people that have been with CERT for quite a while.
Not CERT. CERT's a separate category, and these are folks who drive the, capable of driving the breathing support unit, come out to support various either training events or actual fires with our rehab unit.
Ah, got it. Okay.
Okay, and, okay, that's all I need to know for right now. Thank you. That, that's all I have.
Questions, what, what we got it open? So which one is unit four fifty-nine?
It's one of the utility pickup trucks here. I don't know off the top of my head. What, which page are you looking at, sir?
Well, it's just an oil change. So it's seven hundred and sixty dollars for an oil change and brake inspection on a vehicle. And there are a bunch of these in there. That, that seems, unless we have to tow it there or something, that seems like a lot of money for an oil change. I don't care what kind of oil it uses.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll have to do a little digging. It's more than, it was a significant amount of service on them, not just a oil change and a, and a brake check. But I'll, I'll get more details on that and respond via separate correspondence.
Okay, because we have a bunch of those in here. And the air conditioning, you know, sixteen thousand dollars for emergency air conditioning. I hope we got a whole new system for that.
We did, sir. Okay, this is one of the challenges with the, with our two stations that were built in the sixties is that a number of those systems are at the end of their lifespan.
Yep, that's good. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, that's all I have. I'll, I'll make a motion if you want one.
Let's go ahead and adopt these.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt two point three and two point four on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Marcia, can we get a vote, please?
Director Dan Ziger.
I.
Director Jacks.
Aye.
Director Jorgens.
I.
President Donner.
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, directors, with your, your approval, go back. If I may correct a statement, four fifty-nine is medic unit forty-five, and that was for brake replacement and total service of a medium duty chassis with a, obviously a paramedic box in the back. So significant amount of work on one of our frontline.
That was the two thousand dollar item.
Same answer.
At least I saw that, the one I saw that said oil change and brake replacement was twenty-two hundred dollars. The one that was just an oil change and brake inspection was seven hundred dollars.
I'll get it, I'll get an itemized list for you.
All right, moving on to public comment. Any, Marcia, do we have any hands raised or?
Yes, we do. We have one hand raised. Jonathan Goodwin.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Jonathan.
Well, there, President Donner, three things. I only wanted to speak about one, but I got to speak about three, so I'm going to do it very quickly. Number one, it's customary and proper when going, getting to the consent agenda, not only to ask if directors want to pull an item, but also ask public if they want to pull an item to discuss, just, just as a point of reference. Number two, last month, I spoke about brush that's on the side of Canyon Road that's been left there by the district. And the stuff that was in Maraga was moved or chipped or something. The stuff that was on the county part of the road was not. And what happened in the meanwhile was that the county went down there and cut a bunch of tree limbs that were growing out over the road, which is kind of interesting that they had to do that after district crew was already there. And they chipped that stuff and dumped it on and put the, spread the chips on top of the desiccated material left there by the district. You may be wondering, why did they do that? It's because they're going to do road surface work down there and they didn't want to get their machines messed up by the low hanging branches. It's very practical on their part. However, it just increases the fire danger there. And it seems to me that if the, I would like to understand. Well, to put it another way, I don't understand why the material can be removed in Maraga and not in the uncorporated area, and maybe the district could just quietly deal with that. Now, the thing I really want to talk about is emergency preparedness. This had come up. Chief said that the district may look at that this year, and I want to encourage the fire district to do this a little differently this time. Instead of just saying, oh, there's six or seven volunteer groups that are doing this and that, and we can, you know, support them, blah, blah, which is, you know, which is a nice gesture. Instead, go toward what you might think of as something close to a standards of coverage model. Actually, look at what the district's going to face when dispatch goes down, roads are closed and so on, because there's a major regional event. Earthquake, flooding, you know, fires all over the place, something or other, and what the, the district's needs will be. And then, and then look at what, you know, how volunteer support can be incorporated into that. It seems far more sensible to me, and there's a whole bunch of stuff involved in this. Such as who's going to do the extra public work stuff that can't be handled by the city and town? Do they have MOUs in place with contract operators for bulldozers and blah, blah? And if they do have those MOUs, does anybody currently working there actually know about it? Which is a whole other matter level in itself. And there's, there's tons of things, you know, that need to be looked at in this. And my suggestion is that the district not just take this on itself as such, but actually do what the city and town and others tend to do, which is create a task force of knowledgeable people. There are a bunch, a surprising amount of very knowledgeable people in these communities, one of whom is chairing the meeting right now, who would be very able at looking at these, these questions and coming up with useful recommendations for, for the fire district going forward. And I'm hoping now in conclusion that some enterprising young director will rise to the challenge here and work with the fire chief to bring something like this to the board very soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Jonathan.
We do not have any more hands raised.
Okay. Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment.
So we, we do have one more hand raised. Lisa Foster.
Okay. Lisa, can you, can you hear me?
Yep, there we go. Sorry, just a process question. The chat's been disabled, so if we want to send a note through chat, we can't do that at the moment.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcia, can you see that and make sure that the chat function is enabled on our Zoom meeting, please?
Yes, I will see if I can correct that.
Thank you.
President Donner?
Yes.
We have received one chat from a panelist.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, that was me. This is Gloria. I just sent a test because it looked like it was working to me. So I just sent a test chat, but I am a panelist.
May, maybe Lisa could just send something now to see if you get it.
There we go.
Yeah, yep.
All right. Lisa, we got your test text message. Thank you.
So, President Donna, this is Director Dan Ziger.
Yes.
What the, the previous caller, Mr. Goodwin, brought up some points that I think they weren't really pertaining to our consent agenda items, two point one to two point six. I think most of them were really during, should have been during, during a public forum. But I, I would just, I would just tell Mr. Goodwin as, as, as a constituent of my district, I'd be happy to talk to you offline after this meeting and go over those items and, and you know, see if I can bring them back, back to the board at a future meeting.
Thank you, Director Dan Zinger.
Okay.
So we, we have one more attendee that would like to comment. He's having difficulty getting his hand raised. He's on the telephone, so I am communicating with him right now to get his contact to help him raise his hand.
Thank you, Marcia.
I agree with that comment.
I have, I have received a written from him, which I am pulling so I can read it into.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcia, and thank you for your patience. Attendees, please, or thank you.
It is the comment on the consent agenda?
I am checking.
Okay.
It's a little bit moot. We already voted on the consent agenda. You're supposed to have comments before you vote.
We just haven't moved on from that to number three yet. That's, you're right. President Donna, maybe I can suggest, maybe we should move on to number three.
I, I have the comment now in front of me. The written comment is from Dave Schneer. Our family has lived in Maraga for twenty-seven years, raised three kids, and my wife has was raised here as well, after working on our yard every weekend for a couple of months and removing significant number of small trees, plant materials.
I'm, I'm sorry. Ms. Holbrook, I, I think that that should be under public comment of items not on the agenda. We're, we're still on.
David, you're, you're taking over Michael's job. He's the only person that gets to comment on whether people are out of order or not.
Okay.
You know what, Steve, we, we, we're just going to wrap this up. We're going to let Marcia finish and then we're going to move on.
Okay, let's go.
Thank you, Marcia. Please continue.
After working on our yard every weekend for a couple of months and removing a significant number of small trees, plant material and other organic matter and receiving a warning letter and subsequent stock violation letter with generic photos. My wife requested a visit by MOFD representative to clearly explain the specific expectations of the agency. We received a visit at our home eleven, seven, eleven, twenty-two by Chief David Winnaker. He did not identify himself as the chief, did not introduce himself with any standard protocol of civility or decency, and only offered that he was the chief once I asked. Arrogant, egotistical, sexist, derogatory, demeaning, sickening, supremacist. There's a lot of other things in here that I can forward to the directors that I do not understand. It's all there in writing. What about the MOFD website and chief's message? If you have any questions, call. What happened? To serve and protect, there is no place in public service for this type of discriminatory action and disrespect of longstanding community members or any member of the public for that matter. If this chief does not have the ability, skills, or temperament to work collaboratively with the public, then the board needs to find a chief who does have such characteristics. Very simply, he could have suggested and set a meeting with a community outreach volunteer or staff member with the PR skills and temperament to interact with the public. Indeed, we have a very positive subsequent visit from a fuel mitigation person from MOFD. He was very courteous, pleasant, and professional. But here are the elected board members who are supposed to represent constituents and at least be responsive to constituents' requests. Now totally unresponsive despite repeat requests for assistance, I sent three email requests to our dedicated board member, Mr. Dex, and then followed up with a request to the district secretary and notification to the entire board. To date, we have still received no response from anyone on the MOFD board. Why is there no response? Why are you hiding? What are you scared of? Why are you even on the board? Lack of oversight, lack of common decency, lack of professionalism. You should all be ashamed of these violations of basic tenets of fair and equal treatment and protection of all, not just white males who protect their white males. If you cannot be responsive to the needs of all, regardless of race or gender, take criticism to improve the function of the organization and truly serve and protect others at a higher level than protecting your own self-interest. It is time for you all to step aside, let others who really are dedicated to the safety, organization, and respect of constituents, neighbors, and friends step up. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Marcia.
We do not have any more hands raised, and we've not received other, any written comment.
All right, thank you. I will close public comment on the consent agenda, two point one through two point six. I will open up public comment. I've brought items not on the agenda, which I think we've covered already.
So Michael, so I do have a comment on the public, kind of a response to the public comment. I'm more than happy to call the person. I will want to have our district, given their attitude, I will want to have our district council on the phone with me if I'm, if I do that. But, you know, I'm happy to respond to them and that. And I will just tell you in general that I have known the chief as long as literally anybody in this call, and, you know, I have never seen anything like that from our chief, so I will be very surprised, but I'm willing to listen to what the other people have to say.
Well, you know, Director Jorgens, like you, I have been to dozens of engagements where the chief has spoken publicly, and he's, he's been nothing but professional, courteous, polite. And I, if you take the call, that would be great with, with, with counsel.
Right.
And see if we can make this person feel better for whatever, whatever they're feeling.
Happy. We'll talk later about just setting a time.
Okay.
Thank you. Just FYI, I don't think you voted on the remaining consent items, the ones that got pulled, or maybe I missed it.
You, you, John, you, you did miss it. We voted.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And Marcia, do we have any hands raised or received any more public comment for items not on the agenda?
We have two hands raised. Mark Evans.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mark.
It's a process. It, it's very disruptive to have Jonathan call in and just sort of a stream of consciousness, tell everybody these things, as well as this other gentleman who we had to read his letter. Is it not appropriate to say that they should be sending this in in writing ahead of the meeting so we can actually dig into it? I just feel like you guys are putting it in a position, I understand it's a public meeting and we want to encourage public participation. But my feedback in both cases is there's a lot of complaining and it was very hard for me to understand where the meat was. And I just think it's a disservice to the, the board of directors as well as the rest of the community to have to listen to this. It would be much preferable to, to read in writing so we could understand what the real issue is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mark, and the board will take something into consideration in the future. Marcia, do we have another hand raised? Marcia?
Chris Young.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I recently received the guide to wildfire preparedness and evacuation and noticed that the MOFD is part of the consortium who produced it. So I just want to thank everyone for this guide. I think it's, it's. noticed that the MOFD is part of the consortium who produced it. So I just want to thank everyone for this guide. I think it's, it's really helpful, has some great tips and is really important for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you for the good feedback, Chris. Appreciate the call.
We do not have any more hands raised. We've not received any additional public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment for items not on the agenda. 4.1, public hearing on failure to comply with a notice to abate order for 34 La Campana Road, Aranda, California, APN and declare the property a seasonal and recurrent nuisance and order the fire chief to abate the property.
Marcia, do we have a representative of the property owner on the, on the line?
Yes. I am unmuting. They're listed as Tish Gleason, and I understand that the owner is with this person.
We just establish comments, please, before we begin the item.
It is not the property owner. It is Keith St. Clair who's been doing the abatement on the property.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead with the presentation. Just want to make sure we, you had the ability to talk before we move forward.
Thank you, Chief Winnaker.
Good evening, directors. In accordance with the California Health and Safety Code and California Fire Code, the Board of Directors must hold a public hearing to allow property owners the opportunity to show cause as to why the official notice to abate order should not be enforced. The property located at 34 La Campana Road, Aranda, California, 94563, APN 262191005, has recurring property violations identified in a 30-day exterior fire hazard property assessment notice issued to the property owner on September 8th, 2021. On April 28th, 2021, all parcel owners within the fire district were mailed informational postcards identifying the compliance deadline and detailing specific fire code requirements for exterior hazard abatement. Fire prevention staff performed an assessment of the property after the June 1st deadline and found the property to be in violation of the exterior hazard abatement requirements. On September 8th, 2021, MOFD staff mailed the property owner a 30-day exterior fire hazard property assessment notice identifying violations found on the property. Inspections performed after the third day violation and violations still found on the property. On October of 2015, October 15th, 2021, a notice to abate letter was mailed, giving the owner 15 days to abate the identified violations. The notice to abate letter identified each violation, provided pictures describing each violation and ways to correct the violation. Reinspected was performed after 15 days and violations were still found on the property. On November 4th, 2021, a pre-citation letter was issued due to the existing and recurring violations on the parcel. On April 21st, 2022, staff issued the administrative citation for failure to correct identified violations on the property and imposed a $100 fine. On May 19th, 2022, a second administrative citation and $200 fine was issued for failure to correct the identified violations. On June 2nd, 2022, a pre-lean notification was sent to the owner identifying that the owner, notifying the owner that the district would be moving forward with an abatement hearing. On June 23rd, 2022, the abatement hearing notification was mailed, notifying the owner that the Board of Directors of this fire district convene an abatement hearing for 34 La Campana Road, Aranda, California, during the regularly scheduled board meeting on July 20th, 2022. After the abatement hearing and the declaration by the board that the property violations are seasonal recurrent nuisance, staff will begin the process to hire contractors to abate the violations. Staff will bill the property owner for the cost of the abatement and if necessary, will place a lien on the property, reimburse the district for the abatement costs. With that, I would ask if, if the owner or the owner's representative has anything they would like to address to the board.
This is going to be Keith St. Clair talking, but he has been working on the abatement. He never got the letters because the property owner Lawrence is physically, he's challenged. And so he doesn't, when he sees something in a white envelope, he throws it away. So this has been all been brought to Keith's attention, who has, who has paid those $300 in fines. And now he'd like to probably say something, but I'm just giving you a heads up on what I know.
Yes, ma'am.
So go ahead.
Chief Winnaker, I noticed in the La Merinda news that you are talking that 80.6% of the citations you issued are not responded to. I am not part of that group. I have been working on Lawrence's property for 29 years. I've known him for 73 years. He's a good friend. He has a lot of physical and mental problems. When you send him all these citations and I see that you send a pre-lean, he does not show them to me. His attitude is simple. Anything that comes in a white envelope is bad news and he throws it in the trash. I was not aware of what was going on. Gordon Graham came to by my house and I'm not too sure of the date on this, this year, obviously, and told me that my friend had a problem. I had a hernia tear. I had a hard time getting up there. We have been up there now for nine weeks. We have taken down enormous amount of trees. The grass is not the three inches that you require. It's dirt. That's the way I do it. We've gone up 25 feet on every tree that's there, cut all the branches down there. I see absolutely no way that a fire can be started there. Lawrence does not have a kitchen. It would have to be from somewhere else coming aerial. I have a GoFund. I'm going to start. A friend of mine did it two years ago. We were successful on that. I've got that going again. And it's going to take some time because it's a large amount this year. At the last minute, when I was up there with Gordon Graham and Jeff Isaac, somebody has a recent complaint down on the street and I had them come up here to look at it because we were five trees and I could not identify with a friend that's helping me because the picture was taken from the street. It was very dark. We could not identify the five trees. When Graham and Isaac came up there, they went down the hill and they find nine more trees. I need more time. I've got a incredible excavator and tree guy coming, but I need time to do this. We will get it clean. I can't see any reason why that any fire could possibly start the way we've got it right now. I've gone way beyond what the original photos show. We've taken ivy out of trees. We've cleaned the driveway out. We've cleaned the bamboo off around the front of the house. We've done an enormous amount of work and I see no problem with it.
Let me, just to make sure we're both on the same page. There are, there do remain 14 dead trees on the property. Is that correct?
That I believe that. We had five and they found nine more. That's correct. I was not aware of the nine. That was a recent complaint, I believe, if I'm looking at this right, it looks like it was, it was a complaint on July 15th. So I need, you know, I just found out about this. I didn't know. We will get it there. I've got, Gordon and I talked, I think, two years ago when I cleaned it up and we talked about the situation that we talked for a long time up on the street of being able to cut the wood up and treat it like firewood and stack it down below. And we did that. Now, we've added some logs to that, but the logs that have been added are oak and they're going to be taken out of there for people that want them for firewood. So the original stack, but my goal now is to take out everything. I had my house on the market. It did not sell. I'm stuck here in Aranda. I was moving to Hawaii and I want to get it so it's absolutely flawless, like a city park, because I have a friend of mine who will go in there and all he'll have to do is weed it from now on. There won't be any branches, poisono, Scotch broom. Everything's been taken out. I'm a builder, by the way. I know what I'm doing. I've been here 79 years in Aranda.
He's just asking for a little more time.
I'm, yeah, I need more time, period. I, I, I will get it done. There is no, and I don't see any, if you want to come back and look at it, there shouldn't be any fire problem up there right now. We are getting on it.
Just the trees.
It's the trees. This is all just a new notice. It's, it surprised the hell out of me. I didn't see it coming. Okay.
Director, I have nothing to add other than we, we've certainly been in touch with Mr. St. Clair and we've made a number of site visits attempting to contact the property owner, which have infrequently been successful, recognizing that, that he does not read his mail, even when it's delivered or we hand deliver it. As I say, the, the attempts to, to discuss this with the homeowner have largely been unsuccessful. Where he either won't come to the door or is unresponsive to our attempts to make contact.
Yes, go ahead. You're talking, you're talking. Yes.
Not even, not come to the door. When I tell him that you will be there, he goes in, he hides. It's that, he's afraid of you. And he has a reverse mortgage. If you put a lien on his house, which will happen and reverse mortgage will not allow that, he will be out and he will basically be homeless. He has no place to go. And he's scared to death. He is very scared. And I think I talked to, maybe it was Jeff Isaac, that when you knock on the door, be very careful with him. He can have a heart attack right in front of you. He's that fragile.
Keith, this is Director Donner.
Who you're talking to.
Has work been done on the property in the last two weeks?
Oh, yeah, I'm constant on it, but I'm waiting now. I'm waiting now for, yeah, we're taking out more leaves. I've done the, the roof three times to keep it on. I'm up there and blowing the leaves off the driveway, keeping it constant. We're waiting for you, the guys, to tell us, can I get the extra time to get the GoFund going?
So I'm, I'm, I'm going to thank you for your comments, sir, and thank you for, thank you for helping out your neighbor. I want to ask the, the chief, have you been up to the property in the last couple of weeks to see what work has been done?
No, sir. We were not aware until very recently, as in today recently, that this additional work had been done. I would, I would point out with regard to the dead trees that the, the dead trees do constitute a violation of the fire code and that this was complaint driven and is now spread over several years as we work to resolve the issue.
Chief, well, I guess actually I would ask the gentleman that made the comment. So is the GoFundMe to fund cutting down the trees and it, and it won't happen unless you get the GoFundMe?
Um, my contractor, first thing he asked me, and Gordon Graham recommended me and I, I've known him and went to Marimony with him. Well, actually, I'm 18 years older than he is, but he's really good. And he told me how we're going to do this. We're going to get a crane. We're going to block off the street. We're going to lower boxes down there. We're going to take out all the old lumber and all the dead trees. Get it out of there, clean it up. It will look like Tilden Park.
Hey Craig, it will happen without a GoFund.
But I need the GoFund. He asked me right away, where's the money coming from? I said, we're, we're going to start a GoFund. We were successful two years ago. It's a little tricky now because of the inflation and it's quite a bit more money.
Yeah, the challenge for us is, I, I, I think that.
Craig, this is Tish. I had surgery on my neck, so I don't sound like me, but it will happen without a GoFundMe. Okay? We just have to have the person who said they do the work be able to do it sooner rather than later.
This is Director Jex. What, two weeks will accomplish what we're asking for?
Do you think we can get the work done in two weeks? Do you think those?
You can't get a GoFund in two weeks.
No, no, Keith. I'm going to put up the money. We'll worry about the GoFund later.
You're going to put the money?
I'm going to put up the money. We just got to get the guy to do it within two weeks. Can we get the guy to do it within two weeks?
I don't think so. I can call him tomorrow, but he put me on his schedule and he's out of wait. He's very busy. He's probably the best tree guy in the whole Bay Area.
Well, can we, can we talk to him?
Yeah. Brian Gates is his name. Gordon recommended me. I am totally impressed with him. And, yeah.
And I'll put up the money and we'll figure it out later, guys. If he can get it done in two weeks, we'd love that. But we can, we can call him tomorrow and see what he has to say.
Why the? That seems pretty, pretty reasonable to me.
So, so chief, I, I understand your frustration that these, number one, it's complaint driven by, by neighbors.
I know that and I, and I'm.
Hold on one second, sir. I'm talking to the chief. And, and we appreciate your, we appreciate your work and you helping out the neighbor and, and trying to mitigate this issue.
They grew up together.
So, so chief, would you be satisfactory, giving them some type of extension?
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, this isn't, this isn't frustration. This is following the process. And the, the process says that after we've gone through these steps, if work has not been done, we have to move forward with either additional fines or with a lien. As a general statement, we don't move forward with lien funded work on parcels that are occupied. In this case, as the, the fines were not, the, the fines are intended to precipitate action on the part of the resident. It was apparent that that, that would not be the case in this, which is why we made a decision that we don't make lightly to move forward with a lien. That said, it is certainly within the board's purview and authority to either, to not approve the lien, to approve the lien, but direct staff to, to delay taking action. But I would point out that that in this case, our engagement with the property began with complaints from neighbors who correctly pointed out that there were violations of the fire code present on the parcel. And so from a staff perspective, the fire code has a process we must follow. A resident complaint brought us to that parcel. We can't unsee what we have seen once we have been there, most of the complaint. But it's certainly within the board's purview to either grant an extension or to order abatement, but, but direct staff to delay, to give more time for someone else to do the work. It is always preferential for work to be done on a voluntary basis by the parcel owner instead of by the district, which encourages not only additional staff time, but an administrative fee that is levied against the property.
Chief, I, I trust Tish that she would do what she says she's going to do. I think we can give them a couple of weeks to get this figured out. And, you know, if it doesn't get done before our next meeting, we can do it again next meeting. And I don't think that, you know, there are a lot of dead trees in our city and.
Thank you, Craig. I know you understand me.
Can I talk?
Yeah.
This is Keith. I, if I'm getting this right, you have an attachment B, which is a complaint that was on July 15th. I'm aware of who sent that in. That's the one, it was the new nine trees that we were not aware of. We'll get it done. I also volunteer from El Caminito, where I live, all the way down La Cuesta on the Country Club property. Fire, fire department is not involved, but I clean that up three times a year. Club does a lousy job, so I clean that and it's beautiful. I've lived here all my life. I love this place, but I wanted to sell my house for one reason. I firmly believe in all the years I've worked in the Oakland Hills fires, three of them, that a fire is coming here eventually. And I'm sorry to say this, but I don't believe that anybody in God's green earth can put it out when it starts in Aranda. It just, it's going to be bad.
Yes, but this can help.
But this will help. Lawrence's place is a canyon. If, if we clean this out the way I want to, it will be an awesome fire prevention, both ways, back to La Campana and all the way, as far as I'm concerned, all the way to the other in La Campana to St. Stevens, because it's a huge canyon. And if it gets a fire down there, it's going to be really hard to put it out.
So the only other comment I guess I would make in addition to the idea of giving a little delay is, you know, you might want to look at the, the trees seem, you know, pine trees of a certain age just seem to die. And you might want to think about, since you got all the right stuff there to be a little preemptive and maybe cut down some more of them before they die.
Okay.
That's up to you. I'm, you know, that's not a fire code thing. That's just a, it might.
Oh, okay. But, but like I said earlier, the branches, we went up 25 feet. I can go up to 40 feet with my, with my equipment. It would be really hard to catch them on fire, impossible from the ground.
Dead trees burn quickly, so.
Yeah, okay.
President Donna, this is Director Danciger.
Go ahead, Director Danciger.
You know, this has been going on for, since September 2021. It's about 10 months now and I, I read all the comments from the neighbors. I've seen the pictures. We do have an option. I mean, I'm not opposed to giving them some extension here to try to get the work done. It, it sounds to me, it's a lot of work to get done in only two weeks.
Impossible.
Yeah. So I just see this thing dragging on and on and on after, you know, all the work we've put into this and everything. We do have the option here of approving this notice to abate and then at directing the chief and staff to, to hold it in abeyance for a certain amount of time. I just feel that if we, I mean, I, I heard Keith, I heard Tish, I, I, I appreciate all the work they're doing for this property owner, but I just feel if we let this go to next month, which would be, which will be four weeks from now, and then they want another one. I mean, this is going to go on all summer and.
No, it's not.
I just don't see it happening in two weeks. So then what's going to happen after two weeks? If we give, you know, if we give the chief the authority now and, and have him hold it in abeyance for a certain amount of time, you know, that might get, got it, get it going. Without doing that, what's the, what's up? And just leaving it open, this is going to come back to us next month. So I'm, I, I don't want to be, I, 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 you know, I want to be understanding to the homeowner. understanding to the homeowner, but this has been going on for ten months. Uh, the, the neighbors raised eleven thousand dollars previously. Um, I don't see the neighbors putting in more money, but I mean, they may. Uh, I, I would just like to put that out there to the board to talk about, uh, maybe approves, approving this, uh, notice and, and asking the chief to, to hold it for the time being.
Can I say that there's a couple of us that will put in the money to get to the twenty-five thousand dollars to have this work done? We just need to talk to the people who said they would do the work for that amount of money and say, where are we on the list and can you move us up? So maybe a day or two that we can get back to all of you.
People that have been walking by, looking down the canyon while I'm working have all said, I was, we're starting a GoFund and they said, count us in. I know that it's very hard to go to the well twice, but I believe the people up there. I was raised right next door in nineteen forty-three. It's always been probably one of the best neighborhoods in all of Arinda. Good people up there.
Well, what, what do the other directors think about approving this with, with directing chief to hold it for a certain amount of time? I, I just think it's gonna go on and on. I don't, I don't see this happening in a couple of weeks, so. Maybe this will be the incentive they need to really get it done in, in a few weeks. One way or another, either the, the person they know or somebody else. And there's somebody who will go out there and, uh, and, and do this work.
So do you have a, a price estimate from the person that told you how much it's gonna cost?
Keith?
You're on mute.
Yes, there is a, a guy that says he'll do it for twenty-five thousand.
I've got one for twenty-five. Uh, Gordon recommended him. Gordon was shocked that he can do it from that, for that price. Um, I know, uh, Brian Gates, his equipment is second to none in the whole state of California. The guy is amazing. He can take out eucalyptus, you could bore a hole through and drive your trucks through it. It's, they're so big. He has got all the equipment to do this.
But Tish, you're willing to put on twenty-five thousand bucks?
Uh, yes, Craig, I am. I think that we can get other, we can do a GoFundMe down the road and other people will be happy to put in because of the work that's being done and the safety of themselves and everybody around them. I wouldn't be the only one putting towards this twenty-five thousand upfront. Uh, there's a couple of other people who said that they would go in right now to take care of it.
Director Jex, do you have any comments on the matter?
Well, I was, well, that indicated I felt if we gave them the next two weeks to get it done is fine. I, I, I certainly understand, uh, the other directors' feelings that maybe they ought to proceed. And if work is done in a couple of weeks or at least almost complete, we can reevaluate or give management the authority to do at that point.
Well, here's, here's a maybe, uh, uh, another way to think about it. If we have a contract to do it within the, if, within two weeks, you have a signed contract that'll be done within the next month, would that satisfy the chief? If somebody said, here's the signed contract to have it done in the next month and the, a prepaid contract to have it done?
Yes, sir. From our perspective, um, uh, a, a contract proceed is a general statement. We proceed, we, we, from a fire code violation and clearing those violations, as, as long as it's within a, a reasonable period of time, thirty to sixty days at the out, at the long range. We, we have a, a long record of accepting those, um, to, to stop the fire code citation process, just given the, uh, the potential backlog for in-demand, either true removal or other contractors in, uh, this time of year.
Okay. So Tish, is that reasonable?
That's great. Thank you, Craig and Chief Winnaker.
I would be supportive of that.
I would be as well.
I would too.
We have a hand raised.
Okay.
If this is somebody who's gonna say so. Yeah, they just muted.
Mark?
Yeah, this is Mark Evans. I'm a homeowner in Arinda, just like this gentleman. And I have to follow all the rules. I think this person has known for a long time this is an issue. His neighbors have said this, if you read all the public comments. Where do we go with this? I understand you guys are being compassionate, but to be blunt, this homeowner should not be living in Arinda. They cannot take care of their property. If they think that, oh, it's gonna burn anyway, move out. We need people who believe that we can make our neighborhood safe. And you guys giving a break and setting a precedent that you're allowing this to go on, I do not support. Thank you.
Well, I think all we're saying is that we want to get it done in the next thirty days. And if we have a signed contract, then, you know, so as far as I'm concerned, we can say, we'll support having the chief do it and, you know, we'll pass the resolution, but give the, give Tish and the other gentleman time to, uh, you know, in two weeks to have a signed prepaid contract and give the guy a total of thirty days to get it done. We have a, a long history of giving people thirty days to get the trees out.
But this is not just something that happened this years, guys. You guys, if you wish, it's been going on and on. I'm just saying, you're, you're making a precedent that somebody else is gonna come around. I don't support, but you guys are the directors. I'm just, as a citizen, I would not support this.
I, I think we also have to take into account the fact that the guy might not be as, you know, I, I'm not sure that all the currently involved people that are maybe a little more with it have been involved that long.
We have another hand raised. Jonathan Goodwin.
Uh, just briefly, uh, first to Mr. Evans. The reason I spoke so fast the other times is because three minutes is a very short time to express yourself, just to let you know. If you have a lot of stuff to say, and I'm sorry that, uh, you couldn't grasp it because of that speed, but it's, that's a compromise there. Uh, to this, to this issue, I want to speak in favor of compassion. I believe in it. I think it's the right thing to do. This fire district is not here to, uh, just, you know, lord over people, for lack of, lack of being able to come up with a better term. Uh, it, the fire district is created by the people for the people. Right? And if the people don't care about each other, there's something really wrong here. So I think there's something actually right here, uh, with the approach the directors are taking, maybe some more than others, uh, in terms of not digging your elbow into the ribs of the people, saying, you know, we want to make sure you, you, you go. Uh, but, you know, giving them a little, a little bit of kindness, because boy, oh, boy, from what I've under, you know, from what I can understand from this, they deserve that. Thank you.
So do we need to, I'll make a, I'll make a motion. How's that? If we're done with the public?
I'm sorry, we have one more hand. Lisa Foster.
Hello, Lisa. You're back on.
Hey, it's, it's, it's Lisa's, uh, husband, Charles Foster. Um,
Hello.
Hey, uh, thanks a lot for, for, um, for putting this together. That my, and I, I, we live right next door to Lawrence. The, the question I have basically is that regardless of how we feel about whether being compassionate or not, the, or is the process basically from the, the stamp, uh, Maraga, Arinda Fire District is, you don't really care how it's done as long as it's done. So, um, even though the, the, the resident isn't really capable of living here anymore, just for, it barely sort of takes care of himself. Uh, you, you don't really care as long as, as, as certain boxes are checked in terms of, of, um, you know, fire material removal, because that, that I guess, it sounds like that's the, that's where this is headed.
Just from, if I can speak from a process standpoint, from our perspective, the, the, we don't stand on ceremony, if you will. How the work gets done uh, is essentially irrelevant from our perspective, as long as the fire code requirements are met. Uh, that said, we have a strong bias for work being done on a voluntary basis by the resident or the property owner, simply because it's far more efficient. It does not consume additional district resources to, um, to oversee the work, to ensure it's done, and then to go through the administrative process of recouping reimbursement plus the administrative fee.
Yeah, I, I, and I, and I think, uh, what, in just sort of layman's terms, I think just the community needs to be aware that, um, that the, it sounds like the problem will get solved in the short term. It, it, it will not go away. I mean, they, I mean, brush will grow back. I, I think basically the, the only thing to be aware of and be on the record of is understanding that the people who are helping Lawrence right now, um, that, that help is finite. And, uh, you know, Keith, Keith is not, and, and I'm a good friend of Keith. Uh, Keith, Keith go down tomorrow in terms of an injury or otherwise and not be around to help, uh, shepherd this process. Um, in which case, uh, we'll be back to square one in, you know, X amount of time. So, um, I think it's just, it's just managing everybody's expectations that it'll get, it might get be taken care of. This might get to, might get taken care of in the short term, but in the long term will be, we'll, it's fair like we would back in having this discussion.
Thank you for your comment.
So I'll make a motion that we approve this now. We have the chief hold off on it for thirty days and that if in the next two weeks, we have a signed contract to finish the abatement within whatever the chief feels is the right amount of time, thirty days is what I would have said. Then he will hold off and wait for that to happen. And otherwise he goes ahead with the abatement for, for us.
Do we still have one more hand raised?
Oh.
Thank you, Marcia.
Tish Gleason.
You're on mute, Tish.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. Uh, Keith was telling me that he has somebody set up for next year that all they have to do is weed eat. He'll have this property sewed down to dirt that after the rain, all they'll have to do is come by and, and weed eat. So I think he's got it under control and I trust him because I see the work he does everywhere.
Go by my house, number one, El Caminito. I'm probably the only house in Arinda that has a front yard full of dirt because dirt won't burn. And we keep it that way. And Lawrence's is gonna be exactly the same way. Stuart has already been contacted. That's what he does. He will weed eat it. And there will be no branches on the ground, no poison oak, no sage brush or greasewood, as I call it. Scotch broom. Everything has been cleaned out. It is, it's gonna be like a city park. And that's the way the neighbors want it. And that's the way it's gonna be.
So there's a motion before the board?
It's, I think it's a motion, Craig. Director Jex.
I, I, I'd like to hear the, the, I'd like to hear the motion again.
Motion is to approve the item as the chief prepared it here that we, you know, the, moving forward with the, uh, with the MOFD abatement, but having delayed the enforcement and if, if within two weeks they have the, um, people, Tish, whoever is there has a signed contract to do the abatement within the next thirty days, that, uh, the chief will hold off, you know, waiting for that to happen. And if it doesn't happen, then he'll just do the work.
So just, 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 just to rephrase, we would have, um, we would approve the, uh, the order to declare this a property of seasonal recurrent nuisance, we would. Uh, and also part of the motion will be that they should have a signed contract within two weeks that they will get the work done within thirty days.
Yeah. That's what I said.
Okay, I, I, I could have, I could go with that.
And Director Jex, you, you second the motion?
I did.
Okay, Marcia, can we get a vote, please?
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Jack?
Hi.
Director Jorgan?
Hi.
President Donner?
Hi.
Okay, Tish, go get it done.
I, I, the last thing I would say is, we talked a lot about the dead trees, uh, in reviewing the, the documents, all the exhibits we had. There was, you know, a, a considerable amount of, uh, trash around the house, combustibles, other, other items also besides just dead trees. So, you know, all of that is also gonna have to be done within this period. So I just. Okay.
Thank you, Director Danziger.
Yeah.
Tish has re-raised her hand.
Go, go ahead, Tish.
You're on mute.
I want to say thank you to everybody, the board for, for going in this direction. And I just want to let you know Keith says all that trash and crap is gonna be picked up and he takes care of it. Lawrence is a guy he grew up with and he's trying his best to keep him here in Arinda because that's where he wants to stay. He said, if they, if he has reverse mortgage, if they put a lien on, he'll have to leave and he will not, he will not leave with it alive.
He will die if he has to leave. It's that, it's that bad.
I really appreciate you guys giving us the time and we're gonna do absolutely everything we can and we'll keep you appraised on what's going on.
Great. Thank you. Next slide, please, Marcia. Five point one, brief information only. Reports related to meetings attended by directors at district expense. Anybody, uh? Okay, moving on. Five point two, questions and information, informational comments from board members and staff.
Um, I, I just want to, I had, this is, uh, Director Danziger, just one item. It was on the consent calendar, but I just want to thank the chief, staff, everybody who supported, uh, all the, uh, endeavors we took, uh, to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary, which occurred on July first, uh, twenty twenty-two. So just thank you, everybody, for that.
Thank you, Director Danziger and Director Jex for, uh, the work in celebrating our twenty-fifth year. Announcements, five point three, communications received.
That, in addition to the communications associated with the public hearing just completed, there's, uh, one letter attached with, uh, the communication, as, as well as a public comment on that letter, which was included in the update on the, on the websites.
Thank you, chief. Five point four, fire chief updates.
Evening directors, we'll start with finance with Mary.
Good evening, directors. Um, I'm gonna start with a brief strike team reimbursement update, uh, for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. We have an outstanding net receivable of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, we had a couple of new invoices just come in in June for some incidents, the Sheep Graham and Calh Canyon fires. So that way, that number has gone up a little bit. Um, and then estimated so far for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, we have about eleven thousand dollars, um, outstanding. There are a couple of people that have been assigned on incidents in July and I'm waiting for those F forty-twos and, uh, uh, those assignments are pending, or the F forty-twos are pending. Um, next slide, please, Marcia. Other items, we're in the process of closing fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And in regards to payroll, there were payroll increases and Sisera rate changes that were effective July first of twenty twenty-two. Those rate changes have been input into ADP and they will, um, the first payroll, uh, it, the July twenty-fifth and August tenth, we will include those changes. And, uh, lastly, we did an OES salary survey, um, with the new salary rates, so that when we are reimbursed for strike team, um, assignments, they'll be reimbursed at the higher rates. And that concludes my report.
All right.
Thank you, Mary. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, um, to start there, Danziger, I just have one question of Mary. How, how's it going with, uh, just, just generally, how's it going with, uh, the, the new bank and, and the lockbox?
Um, the lockbox is, that's going fine. Checks are being sent to the lockbox and they're being deposited directly into our account. And then we can go in and look up and get copies of the checks. So that's working just fine. And we did have a small glitch, a couple of glitches with the, um, with the bank, but that's all been resolved and everything is working smoothly with the new bank at this point.
Great. I, I've gone through bank changes myself in a, in a, in a previous job with the government and I know it's a little, it can be a little tricky at the beginning, so.
Yeah, lots, lots of little details, but I think we've got it all ironed out.
Yes, good job.
Thank you.
Question, Director Jex, uh, the, uh, balance of the one seventy-seven. How quickly are we going to recover this year versus in prior years where we had a harder, more difficult time collecting on a timely basis?
Um, I'll just say that even though these incidents were recent, we already received the invoices from OES, which is much more quickly than we've received invoices in the past. So that's a good sign. I'm, I can't tell you how, how quickly it will be turned around and we'll actually receive payment. But we have received invoices more quickly than we, we, than we did in the past. And these assignments were not tied to COVID. So, uh, we, the ones that took so long were the ones that were tied to COVID. So we, the ones that took so long were the ones that were tied to COVID, which really didn't have an end date. These were specific incidents and so they shouldn't be outstanding as long, but I can't predict how long it will take to actually receive.
Just as, as a reminder, sir, on the, typically. CAL FIRE and OES don't close out the payment of an incident until the incident itself is declared under control. And in COVID, they, they let it run for eighteen months or so before they did the first update. So that during that time, all of the costs we incurred in supporting COVID operations, they, they were leaving the incident open. Obviously, that was an anomaly. And then incidents this time of year tend to be measured in days, whereas we get into the fall. True or historic fire season, those incidents can run for months. So it, it is, you know, ninety to one hundred and twenty days sometimes before they even start processing the paperwork. Where the folks we've had deployed on fires, with the exception of the washburn, those fires are generally being reconciled already. Which means we should see a much more rapid turn on payment than we did last year in the year prior, sir.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your update. Item number B.
Human Resources, Christine.
Yes, hello. Good evening, directors. Tonight I have a brief HR update in regards to the firefighter, paramedic, trainee recruitment process. Oral board interviews were hosted in mid-June. Eleven out of the thirty-three candidates interviewed were passed to the paramedic evaluation. The paramedic evaluation was conducted this past Friday. From the paramedic evaluation, seven out of the ten candidates, one had withdrawn. Have, have passed. So from this, an eligibility list has been established and will be good for two years. So the top three candidates on the eligibility list are moving forward to the background investigation process. And then I will have more updates regarding the recruitment at the August meeting. And unless there are any questions, this concludes my update. Thank you.
Christine, this is Derek the Dancer Goo.
Yes.
Are, are any of those laterals?
No, all of the laterals that applied, they didn't qualify as, as lateral candidates.
Okay, and are you, are you able to share? Any, I'm, I'm just curious on the, the male, female ratio on, on those seven?
Um, not at this point.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And next be the Fire Marshal report. The Fire Marshal is on vacation. I'll be delivering the report. So for year to date, we've received eighty-three dead tree complaints, one hundred and twenty-five exterior hazard complaints. We've received three hundred and fifty-four property transfer inspections year to date. We expect that continue, that'll be on track, but last year's seven hundred and eighty-four, I will continue to see a significant number of initial fails for property transfer. However, very few of those are recurring, as in realtors are, are becoming more self-aware and something of an ecosystem has sprung up around. Providing those services with contractors who have received the district's training and are familiar with, with our requirements. During the month of June, we conducted two thousand eight hundred and forty-six assessments of those fifteen hundred and ninety-four passed, gold fifty-two or fails. Two hundred and forty-three of those places have been closed out. We have another thousand nine that are still open as of the end of June. As the initial assessment comes with a thirty-day window, that's about correct. Those numbers have continued to trend down. As after July first, we turn to re-inspections and are out following up on the parcels that were noted previously. One thousand two hundred and twenty-four pre-citations were issued. A number of elements could result in things going to, to pre-citation. Within that frame, mostly having to do with they'd pre, either previously been cited or it was a recurrent hazard. We have state mandated investing in inspections have not begun and for chipping, there's been no change in those dates or in those, sorry, in those numbers. From last month because we, we are not chipping. The measure R chipper continues to run about middle of the way through the month of June. We transitioned the scheduling of the measure R chipper to the city of Aranda to free up Gordon Graham, who does the scheduling. For both R chipper and the measure R chipper most time freed him up for inspection, inspection follow-up. Now, we've seen a significant. Increase in phone calls over the last week or so in the office as things that were either assessed or pre-inspect, or issued pre-citations in June were followed up with. A citation notice that then precipitated a call and staff spending a significant amount of time now. Going back out to parcels to, to confirm with the owner that, that in the case of a tree that's overhanging the road is in fact within fifteen feet of the road. While certainly we, that's something we do upon request. It does represent a significant draw on staff time and in inhibits our ability. To expand our inspections into other areas, which is why off of the major evacuation routes, large parcels and. Government-owned property, we're generally complaint-driven in those other areas because our resources continue to be consumed by recurrent violations on the roadsides. The large privately-owned parcels and the government-owned parcels throughout the district. If you look at the next page, we see a breakdown of the nature of the, of the violation notices. Those, the three and fifteen EVA, that significant number of those based on, as previously reported. The sort of the batch inspections we're able to do with the three sixty camera and the fifteen-foot pole mounted underneath the UTV. Or the electric bicycle of note, when residents call and ask for someone to come out to explain to them the three and fifteen, as in a tree is in fact within fifteen feet. Measured vertically of the roadside. When the inspector is there and has contact with the, with the resident, that's also an opportunity for the inspector to do. An inspection of the remainder of the parcel to ensure there's no other fire code violations present. And next slide, please. And here we see the numbers based on activity from, from where they fall within the particular timeframe. We had that big initial push. And on the left there in the first week of June and. Carrying over into the second week, those were large, the big push, a significant portion of those were roadside assessments and inspections. And then we're now moving down through the end of June. Fewer inspections conducted, getting back on pre-citations and follow-up for those large parcels that received fifteen days or recurrent notices. And that, that trend has continued into June with many fewer assessments, a lot less blue and a lot more either being resolved. Or citations being issued. I'd be happy to answer any questions directors may have on the prevention report.
Director Dan Ziger here. I, I have a question and it, it, it's, it's not exactly something on the report, but it's, it pertains to fire prevention. And I, I, I had it to ask Christine and so, excuse me, but I can ask it now. What's the status of the. Fire inspector plans examiner position?
So Christine is wrapping up the firefighter recruitment process and then next on her list. Is posting the opportunity for the inspection position. I, I don't want to commit her to anything, but I, I believe we're within a week or two of getting that out, but the. Overseeing the firefighter paramedic recruitment and the EMS assessment center and so forth is taking a significant amount of her time right now.
Okay, and, and when that position, which is the new position, does get posted, will there be, you know, meet, you know. Like, you know, put it on our Facebook, I mean, besides, yeah, like our notices sent, you know, Facebook page and Twitter or whatever, all those.
Yes, sir. It goes, it goes on the website under job opportunities. It also is posted on a number of government job boards. Wherever these sort of things and we'll certainly through the Fire Marshal will circulate it to the Fire Protection Officers Association. So anyone who's, who's in that orbit would find out about it as well, sir.
Okay, great.
Chief, do we, I, I noticed on the check register that we're still paying renting or leasing a chipper or chipper truck at least. And since we're not using it during these three months, I, I thought we also approved buying one. Did we not buy it?
Yes, sir. I, I, I believe. I know we are, we are not leasing. We, we stopped leasing that. I'll, I'll find out about the, the check register about what period that was for.
It said it was through June of this year.
Yes, sir. I'll find out. I, I don't know the answer, but that man.
Thank you for the report, chief.
Next we go to the operations update. Next slide, please. We've had a number of small wildland fires in the district pictured here as a fire by the Maraga Country Club on June twentieth at approximately sixteen hundred hours. This was started by a contractor can performing. Required fuel mitigation work, obviously well past the deadline in response to a district citation. Once again, we encourage all residents and property owner to complete the work that's required prior to the June first deadline. This is not the first time. That a fire has been started by a resident completing late-season fuel mitigation work. This was aggressively attacked by suppression crews and they were able to maintain, to contain the fire to one acre, which is very helpful. If you look at the picture on the top left. Had the fire gotten established into that, the heavy trees and the bay laurel mix there on those north-facing slopes behind the country club. It would become significantly harder to, to catch it and the next logical place to contain it would be. On the, the top of the country club bridge, which would have been a far more significant fire in those heavy fuels. Next slide, please.
So chief, just can I ask a question about that one? So in, in our HOA, at least, we require that anybody that's doing fuel abatement, carry a fire extinguisher. Like physically with them. So do, is that something that we recommend everybody do so that we don't have these problems?
And that's a requirement of the California fire codes, sir. Anyone who's doing fuel abatement work is required to have in a sealed box firefighting equipment. It's specified in the fire code. This happened after the contractor had left the area. The machinery appears to have still been hot and started something after the ignited the grass. It was parked on top of after the contractor left the area.
Chief, I'll just ask something about that one, too. I, I regularly walk on that road there and I noticed last week. To the, to the east of where that fire was, there's significant work being done by, you know, heavy equipment. Is, is that a result of, of some direction from? From the, from the fire district or is that just something else?
No, sir. The, the property owner, that's a seasonal recurrent violation. They were cited with fines. For violations on a number of their parcels throughout the area. They asked for an extension in order to coordinate the work, which we approved through the end of the month and. Some of the work being done out there is in accordance to the fire code requirements. I don't know for sure, but I believe they're doing additional work that, that exceeds the fire code requirements. I, I can't speak to whether. That's for another purpose or if that's for the purpose of fire safety.
All right, thank you.
Okay, on June sixteenth, Battalion Four, Medic Forty-five and Engine Forty-three responded to a serious injury in Tilden Park where man was crushed by two heavy pieces of paving equipment. Based on the information, the call and air ambulance was immediately requested. Patient was administered a newly authorized medication, TXA. That assists with the prevention of internal bleeding. Patient was assessed, treated and en route to the landing zone to meet the helicopter within ten minutes of patient contact. Patient was then flown to a nearby trauma center and is happily recovering well after multiple surgeries. This just speaks to the importance of EMS and the importance of a well-integrated system. Where dispatch, our firefighter, paramedics, both the engine and the ambulance. And, and the, all of the available transport options, in this case to include the air ambulance are integrated. And represents a really a best-case scenario of how quickly care can be administered and then how quick. The patient will be packed, trans, packaged for transport via air in order to have a positive outcome. We also had a vehicle fire on San Pablo Road on July eighth that spread into nearby vegetation. Firefighters were able to quickly contain the fire. Before it made a run up the hill in the heavily vegetated areas just beyond the roadside there. And then you see there in the bottom right, we had a vehicle crash into a creek on North Lane. There were no injuries. And the crews were able to make access and cut power to the vehicle before it ignited surrounding vegetation. So it's been a, it's been a relatively busy month with regard to unique calls. We also are proud to announce the graduation of our two newest firefighter paramedics. Are now probationary firefighter paramedics with us from Berkeley's Academy. We have Kevin Pobre. And Matt Cooper. These two, you may recall, we, we joined them just as COVID was hitting and they suffered injuries during the academy. They, we were, we're very happy that they've completed the, the somewhat extended journey through the initial training and now we're going through their probationary period. And, and now serving the, serving the residents with pride and professionalism.
Yep.
We also. I'm sorry, next slide, please, Marcia. Sorry, I ran out of synchronization here. Thank you. Thanks, Marcia. And next slide, thank you. We've also completed a number of prescribed burns along Campolinda Ridge where approximately eleven acres were burned. Painted rock between Rim and Maraga Road where we burned approximately forty acres. And then on Bear Creek Road and Bear Ridge Road where an additional two acres were, were able to get some prescribed fire on. This is a, a really useful tool for a number of ways. One, it promotes the restoration of native plant growth. This is a fire-adapted environment where the exclusion of fire lends to the intrusion of invasive non-native species, many of which are particularly combustive. So setting the stage for long-term restoration of, of native grasses and restoring that oak savanna, fires are very beneficial tool to doing that. It also, once we have, have been able to ignite those fuels, they are not available to burn again this year. That, that represents a reduction in the potential for uncontrolled wildfire in those areas. And then lastly, it's a training opportunity for firefighters, which means we are able to harness a significant workforce from throughout the region. Because there are limited opportunities to burn and we're tremendously grateful for the community's support of this. We understand that when we're doing it, put smoke in the air and we understand there are some to whom. Those fire blackened hills are unsightly and they would prefer that it not be done. However, we believe this is, is the absolute best tool in our arsenal to reduce. The prevalence of combustive fuels. It also sets the stage for the long-term return of cows to this area, which would sustain. Having, having cleared out the thatch and made a dent in the encroaching brush, a long-term conversion to cattle grazing. Represents an excellent opportunity to support that transition to native grasses. We, we would recommend certainly, it's in out years, but this would be the grazing would be supported by. The cyclical reintroduction of fire on a five-to-seven-year basis to mimic the natural cycle. Next slide, please.
That concludes the slide.
Okay, I've got two more than I, one is we have the, the Fourth of July. We, we had a safe and productive. Fourth, Fourth of July celebration. It was great to see everyone back out. We thank both our surrounding agencies to whom aid was given and received. As well as our volunteers who staffed fire watch and kept an eye on, on the potential for ignition. Obviously, with the fog coming in. That was, that was much less of an issue. We also have two members, Captain Mike Markort and Mike Lacy. Deployed, one currently, one back now to the electra incident in Amador County. And then two folks up on the washburn fire, one is a safety officer, one is a fire line. Paramedic trainee. Of note, the, the fire line paramedic trainee, that was his first assignment. And within thirty minutes of reporting to the line on his first day, it supported a significant evacuation event. Just once again, as a reminder that, that in those settings and elsewhere, incidents can occur at any time. And it's a great opportunity for our firefighters to experience real-world events that build out their experience so that. If and or when there is a, a major event in the district, it's, it's not the first time they've seen it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and that concludes the report.
Chief, this is Director Donner. I have one question just out of curiosity regarding the trauma incident up in Tilden Park. TXA, is that a new drug that is in our drug boxes?
Yes, sir. Recently approved in field in coordination with the LMS.
Okay, thank you.
And, and chief, this is Director Dan Ziger. I did see for that, that burn we had over in Maraga, I did see a big shout out from. OFD Chief Freeman there thanking MOFD for the opportunity for them to come over here and assist on that. So that's great.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's, it's good opportunity. There, there's an ancillary benefit as well of getting folks together from other agencies. The more people who know each other, the more people work together, more people have talked on the radio together. The, the less time it will take to organize the large response that's coming on a, a future vegetation fire, sir.
Yep.
Thank you for the update. Chief.
Yes, sir.
I will open up public comment on items five point one through five point four. Marcia, do we have any hands raised?
Yes, Mark Evans.
Go ahead, Mark.
Hey, thank you. Hey, Marcia, could you go to the Fire Marshal's report, please, the first page? I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, please.
Yes.
So, chief, the question is, I don't know if it's a typo under the left column. It says exterior hazard inspection year to date. And it says twenty twenty-two, three, two, seven, four, but then over on the right, it says June first to thirtieth, the second column. Number of assessments, twenty-eight, forty-six. I guess I'm wondering, is the twenty twenty-two number actually the twenty twenty-one number on the left, the total for twenty twenty-one?
No, sir. That's January first to June thirtieth. No, sir. That's January first to June thirtieth.
Ah, so you basically, okay, that's a clarification. So and what maybe where I was going with that was trying to compare uh what you have done last year, because it seems to, well, I know that you've done significantly more. So are are you kind of comparing that year-to-date and I don't know if that's that important. I I guess what I wanted, I'm asking is have you increased staff or you disappeared? Maybe you've become more efficient on doing assessments? Any feedback on that?
Yes, sir. It's increased efficiencies. Uh, we have the same staff um size that we had last year. Uh, increased efficiencies primarily associated with roadside inspections.
Right. Okay. So in comparison to what you did last year halfway through the year, uh which would have been what, thirty-two hundred? What did you do in twenty-twenty-one?
That the thirty-two hundreds, uh, oh, um I I don't know off the top of my head, sir. Uh, I'm I I it's I'll I'll take a look and and we'll get back to you, but um.
It's not that. I just, my own sense, and we had talked uh separately, my own sense is you're just, it's it's clear. I'm just great. You've got more efficiency. So that's very positive uh what you're doing. Thank you very much.
And just, I'm sorry, I have it up now. Last year, year-to-date as of the end of June was uh one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight.
Chief, a lot of that is your automated, you know, drive around at a little ATV thing with a fifteen-foot pole and automatically take pictures and then go back and get people.
Uh, yes, sir. Eight eight hundred and twenty-two of those um thirty-two hundred are are roadside um uh for the violations. And obviously, that's not something we did last year. So the in the increased number, the significant portion of those are the roadside, automated roadside assessments.
So we do not have any more hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Thank you, Marshall. I will close public comment on items five point one through five point four. Regular agenda, item six point one, implement implementation of the home hardening grant program.
And uh, yes, sir. Uh, and Gloria, if you could let um let our our IT consultant know, we'll be getting to their item momentarily.
Will do.
Thank you. During the March twenty twenty-two Long Range Financial Forecast Meeting, Director Jorgens requested seven hundred fifty thousand be added for fire safety incentive programs. At the April twenty twenty-two Budget Workshop, the Board directed a staff report identifying best practices for a five hundred thousand dollar home hardening grant program. At the May twenty twenty-two Board Meeting, staff presented a five hundred thousand home hardening grant program. Directors discussed that below program guidelines unanimously agreed to provide grants for the purchase of ember-resistant vents not to exceed one thousand dollars per parcel, not to include labor. Eligible projects limited to the retrofit of existing residential vents, not otherwise required by code, using materials and construction methods approved for ember-resistant construction in accordance with the standard identified in Section seven A of the California Building Code and or R three-three-seven of the California Residential Code. At the June twenty twenty-two Board Meeting, Directors Danziger and Jorgens requested details on how the program will be implemented, made available to the public. Following adoption of the budget, staff reviewed existing residential retrofit grant programs to determine best practices. This research determined the following. Grants of six hundred dollars or more require a ten ninety-nine and must be reported as income. Grants of five ninety-nine or less do not require reporting, but do require verification of residency. Grants in the form of in-kind material generate the least administrative burden or the most efficient due to bulk purchasing of items. In order to determine retrofit materials suitable for resident retrofits, the staff ordered a variety of ember-resistant mesh and distributed this material to residents for feedback. Based on positive feedback received, staff has ordered a quantity of bushfire, one sixteenth-inch mesh, and will begin distributing this material shortly. More information will be made available via the district's website and social media feeds when the material is ready for more, is ready for distribution. More information on bushfire mesh is available at the link provided. For resident residents who wish to be reimbursed for commercially available events, the following is required. Proof of residency or property ownership in the district. Proof of purchase showing the product, make, and model. Copy of the OSFM building material listing category eighty-one sixty-five vents for wildland urban interface entry for the make and model showing the proof of purchase. The um building materials listing website is provided um uh under there, under bullet three. Proof of installation in the form of digital photos with date and location available on the data metadata. Uh, it's worth noting that uh as referenced above, new construction and major remodels that for which there is a code requirement for ember-resistant construction are not eligible to participate in this program. Uh, requests for reimbursement not to exceed um I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, there there's a typo there. Requests for reimbursements that do not exceed six hundred dollars will be processed on a monthly basis via check. Requests for be reimbursement for reimbursement amounts between six hundred dollars and a thousand will require submittal to the district if it completed IRS Form W nine. Request for taxpayer identification number. The district will issue and file IRS Form ten ninety-nine to report income for all reimbursements of six hundred dollars or greater on an annual basis. Uh, this program will be rolled out following any input received from the the board as part of this item tonight. That I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board or members of the public.
Uh, I have a, I start to dance again. I have a.
Uh, Director Danziger, hold on. Let me let me open up public comment before the board discusses.
Okay.
Marshall, do we have any hands raised on item six point one?
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received written public comment.
Okay, thank you, Marshall. Go ahead, Director Danziger.
Sorry, Mark Evans just raised his hand.
Okay.
Can't help myself. Just uh understanding the cost of material that we've uh paid for so far, what was the commitment for just the material? You you explained the program. I'm I'm trying to communicate uh to people in firewise what this opportunity is all about. But so far, just ordering material, uh, what was the sort of value of that, Chief?
So the um the price per roll for fifty-foot length is a hundred and twenty-five dollars um for the roll with thirty-four dollars in uh in freight. Um, for a hundred-foot rolls, it's um it's two fifty for the roll and uh fifty-five for freight. Uh, so total per roll, one fifty-nine and three oh five. We've distributed six rolls of the um of the fifty-foot for feedback. Uh, feedback's been confirmed. Um, vents are generally fourteen inches long, so um multiply fifty times twelve inches divided by fourteen for the um the number of vents worth of uh material that is. We've ordered additional material not to exceed our purchasing requirements um so we can get some in and begin distributing it. And then for anything as we start getting above five thousand dollars in materials purchased, that requires um either an RFP if it's above ten thousand or um three quotes, which is uh causing us to look for additional vendors. Uh, we can either provide the same stuff or similar material so that we can get competitive quotes. Uh, because at least as far as we've seen so far, this particular version that that has been well-received is only available from a single vendor and sole source for uh government purchasing is particularly difficult to do.
Okay. And then um I'm just wondering if there's going to be a process. I understand it's material only and the homeowner does the labor. Are we going to try to help coordinate or share information with you or others on uh what some typical costs are for the labor?
Uh, no, sir. The the cost for labor, I think, is so dependent on the particular parcel, the person that the uh resident is um is contracting with to do the work, whether the the vents are easy to access, whether the vents are screwed or nailed, uh whether they're painted in place, uh et cetera. Uh, and there are so many variables on that that I would be, I would be hesitant for the the district to weigh in as that's outside of our expertise. Uh, however, providing the um the mesh or providing reimbursement for those who provide uh who purchase uh an ember-resistant vent, uh that I believes in in keeping with the spirit of the program.
Okay, so I understand that point. What um just another question and any thought on sharing information about who some providers are, just like you have on the MOFD website, the weed abatement type service providers. Just trying to think out loud of how we can help people take advantage of this.
Yes, sir. As as we've become aware of of contractors who have the appropriate licensing and insurance uh who are able to do the work and are familiar with it, we certainly would form, obviously, we don't make um make referrals, uh but we we are able to provide a list of of folks who are capable of doing the work that resident from from which residents can select if they if they choose to hire a contractor.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you for your comments, Mark.
That concludes our hands raised.
Okay, I I see Director Jorgens has got his hands raised.
There. Thank you, President Donner. Um, so I I guess there are two questions. One is uh I did, well, at one comment, I did talk to the guy from uh Bushfire and recommended that they also provide your as as a new product uh circular vents, because a lot of houses, I think most of what you're, the seven-and-a-half-inch screen that you're working on is for foundation vents and maybe other sizes for uh, you know, vents that are on the side of your house versus up in the east. And I recommended that they actually make little punches of slightly oversized same screen that you could just push into your, the round attic vents that many, many houses have. And that would be reasonably straightforward just to hire a handyman for. Um, so hopefully that will be a good concept. I I do have a different topic, though, that would be about this. And I've had a number of people call and say, hey, uh, what about gutter guards? Uh, you know, it's something that not very many people have, and if they already have them, then they already have them. But it you know, it's of the list of things that start fires in your house, having stuff in your gutters, which is reasonably hard to keep current. Um, is certainly a big danger. And and if there are available things that meet whatever fire code is appropriate for them, uh, it seems to me that would be something we should think about adding to our program. Do you have any comments on that, Chief?
Uh, yes, sir. One of the the previous discussion was there, there's not a building material listing for seven A uh gutter guards. Uh, I I would require a little bit of time to do some more research to determine i- if there was um, if there's some similar UL re- uh number or something else that would um that would allow us to categorize um the, sorry, uh gutter guards as uh as being the appropriate type. What we wouldn't want to see is um is a program used that resulted in the installation of uh plastic or other combustible gutter guards. Uh, if we're able to identify the appropriate UL listing, uh, it certainly uh that that would be my my only concern with regard to such a program is is how do we confirm that the gutter guard, in fact, was of the appropriate type? Uh, so it it didn't inadvertently contribute to fire danger.
Great. Thank you.
Chief, this is Director Danziger. On the uh, on the, on the, uh, the mesh material, uh, so residents would have to buy a whole roll?
Uh, no, sir. We're providing in kind. So what um what we did was um initially we purchased six rolls. We provided it to residents who have, uh, you know, demonstrated their commitment to fire safety and we were certain they were going to use it because we wanted feedback about whether or not this was the right stuff and how it was to work with. Uh, the feedback um came from a a variety. Some residents installed it themselves. A couple others had it done uh by a handyman or by a contractor. And the feedback from both uh resident installation, handyman installation and um and contractor installation was overwhelmingly positive. So as a, having received that um that feedback, we're in the process. Uh, we've ordered more, which is being shipped. Uh, when we get it, we will um, we will lay it out, we'll cut it into fourteen-inch lengths which matches the sort of the standard um length of a of a vent. Uh, and then do like we with our drum sales and others, do a pickup event where residents that are interested come down, show us the driver's license, uh establish them they live in the district, um how tell us how many vents they have. We'll give them the appropriate number of pre-cut vents. Uh, and then they'll be on their way. Uh, and uh we think that will be uh a better use of their time. So they're not um trying to source this and trying to figure out the amount they need, which may not match the the size and what their their need may not match the size. Now they end up with, you know, an orphan roll sitting on a shelf forever and ever that they're not sure what to do with. Uh, it also reduces the administrative burden on the district associated with processing reimbursements. Our our preference is always to give material in kind just because the efficiencies and the economies of scale uh versus doing cash reimbursements.
Okay, and um uh, the reason I was asking is um a neighbor asked me about this and they have a a deck uh a wood deck that on the bottom of the deck has like a lattice work around it. And so they asked me the question, can I just get some of that mesh? Should I put it around my lattice work under my deck? So what would, what would you say to somebody like that? I mean.
Uh, boxing in a deck, it's it's always preferable preferable to do it with a solid material. Um, i- if a resident were to box it in um with uh with the mesh, um depending on the size of the uh of the deck, that's a, that's a massive amount of mesh. And the mesh we're purchasing is in the seven-and-a-half-inch height uh which would would not be appropriate to layer it. Um, and and then it's uh ember-resistant vents. Uh, at least reading the the spirit of the policy, uh boxing in a deck would be different than retrofitting ember-resistant vents.
Okay. And.
Well, just can I can I just comment on that? Also, I I actually talked to the guy who happens to be from Australia and they they actually sell it as a product in Australia, uh much bigger, you know, they sell multiple widths of this stuff. And that is actually a program, uh and they encourage you to put it on the outside of your um your lattice work, because then the embers don't get you know, they don't, they can't land on just the lattice work. They have to have gotten through the screen first. Um, and in places like Tahoe, they actually fold it down in this in the wintertime so that it doesn't get crushed otherwise. But they they say that is actually part of the fire code in Australia. They have to have this kind of the sixteen-inch mesh around your decks.
Oh. Okay. Um, Chief had another question for the uh ember-resistant vents. Um, is this going to be effective? Uh, I don't know if we came up with an effective date. Is it July first? So if someone has it done now, can they retroactively get this uh reimbursement?
Uh, uh, i- if that's the board's direction, I'm certainly not not opposed to making it as of July first.
Okay. Um so 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 that that's um that that's what I would propose, that we make it effective July first uh new fiscal year.
Uh, makes sense to me. It's one of the program, you know, got funded for at least. So that makes sense.
Right. Okay. And uh, Chief, I mean, to to roll out this program, you know, as I'm reading the proof of residency, proof of purchase. And so uh you able to do this with existing staff?
Uh, I I don't know, sir. I mean, we're uh we we haven't done it yet, so we'll have to get a sense of how many people are are resp- are requesting reimbursement versus um i- if they're just picking up uh mesh that we've ordered, um that this is the sort of thing that uh that Dennis uh and our our volunteers have been really good about uh coming in to make a workday to to cut it all uh into the appropriate lengths and then staffing up tables at the table. We check the driver's license. We confirm the person has a a an a or address within the fire district, count the number of vents they need. Um, for this type of vents, you know, there's a, there's a relatively reasonable number of how many, the maximum number of vents a house could have. So you know, it's not reasonable that a person needed two thousand vents. Um, you know, somewhere between four and twenty is probably in the reasonable range. We hand them four to twenty vents. We mark off that address that they came by. Um, and nothing else to it, very little staff uh burden associated with that. Um, when we start getting into requests for reimbursement and ten ninety-nines, uh, that um depending on the number, and that that could levy a a significant staff tax. We just don't know um how great that'll be. And once again, this is a particularly busy time of year for us, mostly because of of the large number of residents who are um requesting that we come explain an element of their fire code violation, that all of which takes uh significant drawn time. So we're backed up right now, but I I just don't know, uh, because we we haven't seen what sort of demand and what form the demand will take, whether it'll be for in-kind or for cash reimbursement.
Chief, just just seeing this is Director Donner, just in case we uh, the program is successful, which we're hoping. You know, maybe we have a and a ninety-day reimbursement policy to give your staff time to process the reimbursements and people won't expect a check within thirty days.
Uh, yes, sir. One of with ten ninety-nines, for anyone who's getting, who's requesting greater than six hundred dollars, um, those will not be processed until our our annual submission to the IRS, which occurs in January or February. Um, simply because that that process is only done once a year.
Yep. No, I'm just trying to, you know, uh, we want the program to be successful. The the more residents that use it, the the better. That's what the grant's there for. But we also need to take your staff into consideration as well.
Thanks, sir.
Seems like a kind of thing that the firewise neighborhoods could maybe help you uh organize or maybe have some volunteers come in or organize a neighborhood to come in and do it as a neighborhood, you know, with it and say, here are the five requests and do it and make it a little easier. So.
Yes, sir. Uh, with that, I I've see any other uh guidance? I I believe I I have what I need with regard to retroactive and will be, as I say, as soon as that material shows up, we'll be um we'll be, we're getting, getting it organized, the cutting of it and um publicizing, pick up bits.
Thank you, Chief.
Sounds great.
Next slide, please, Marshall. Six point two, authorization to contract with Definitive Networks Incorporated for information technology services and fiber connections for period October first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, with an option to extend for two years.
Good evening, dressers. The district has contracted with Definitive Networks Incorporated since two thousand and five for information technology services. The district employs no staff to perform information technology functions. The current contract with DNI expires September thirty, twenty twenty-two. Issuance of a request for proposals was required for this contract. In January twenty twenty-two, staff contracted with Client First Technology Consulting to assist with the RFP process. Tonight, in attendance, we have Tom Jacobson, Senior Partner with Client First Technology. Tonight in attendance, we have Tom Jacobson, Senior Partner with Client First Technology. Based on recommendations from Client First, the RFP included several changes to reflect the district's needs and current technology standards. At this time, I will have Tom review the current situation, the work that was performed and the improvements that were included in the requirements. So Tom, please take it away.
Good evening, directors. My name is Tom Jacobson, Senior Partner with Client First Technology Consulting. My firm specializes in local government consulting. I've been a partner with the firm since two thousand and seven. I've been in local government consulting for twenty three years. Our firm helps local governments procure annually over ten million dollars worth of products and services. Some of my clients in the area include City of San Pablo. To the north and east of you, Vacaville, Piedmont, Hayward Park District. San Leandro and Newark. So do a lot of work in the area. Our offices are in Corona, California. I would say a couple of the things are germane to this. One is I run an IT support business for municipalities. And other local government agencies in Chicago suburbs. We have ten plus clients in the Chicago suburbs that we do all or a good portion of IT support. Also, I was on the technology committee for the design and implementation of San Mateo Fire District. I was, our firm was hired in January of twenty twenty two to assist with development of RFP. We reviewed. Monthly reports from DNI, the previous contract invoices. And interviewed the Director of Administrative Services and the Fire Chief about future needs. Many of the changes that we 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 put into the, we recommended putting into. The RFP are included in your packet. A few of the highlights are, we asked that the district move away from. A what's called thin client technology. To more of a desktop laptop technology because of increased video needs. Also moving from localized email to Office three sixty five. Improving disaster recovery and backup solutions and. Refreshing technology on a regular basis. Those are the key points. We issued the, we, in conjunction with the district, issued the RP in early May of twenty twenty two. And because it's on the street for over for over the Memorial Day holiday, and because COVID slowed everything down. The RFP was available to vendors for over six weeks to respond. There was a mandatory bidders conference, the six vendors attended. We did a single written amendment to the to the. To the RP. And then we received one response. Which is before you to approve as a contract moving forward. The response incorporates many of the changes we recommended. And I think will serve the district well over the next few years. We did, I think another item that's mentioned there is increased bandwidth from. Both the internet to district headquarters and from district headquarters to the stations. This is necessitated by increased use of video. And pictures for lots of things, as I think you've talked about. Pictures for pictures and video related to tree limbs, drones, drones, training and other and other things. There's more things going on in stations and more things, video things going on across the district. I think that that's about concludes my comments. Welcome to answer any questions you might have about the the process or the proposal.
President Donna is Director Danziger.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, you know, we got. Any feedback on, I mean, we had six people attend the, you know, the. The sessions for proposals and only one submitted any any feedback on why that might have been or. Is it just, I mean.
Our, the business is just really, really busy right now. I I knew we were going to have a difficult time soliciting proposals when for another East Bay agency is. Recruiting, literally recruiting companies to provide fifty thousand dollars worth of time materials, technology consulting. And I was having a hard time getting a vendor to do that for for this particular municipality. The reason actually is folks want to do exactly what's in their wheelhouse. They have a specific toolset and they feel most comfortable within that. Toolset. The requirements of the RFP. Were actually relatively complex. Because a majority of services are with DNI and in DNI data centers. So we would have had to move those services out of DNI data centers into another cloud service provider. Which there's just no way we could answer every question. Vendors would ask related to that. So I think there's some risk to the vendor community. And that reduced the willingness of vendors to propose.
So so if I'm hearing you, so. And and I'm not a a a real savvy tech person, however. So DNI, they provide like the cloud service for us? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yes.
So everything, everything is with them. They have their their service and everything, everything stays there.
Correct. We're going to just move email to Office three sixty five in the coming contract. So that will be with Microsoft, but everything else is with DNI. Some software applications that the district uses are software as a service, so those are are separate also, but not many.
President Don.
Go ahead, Director Jorgens.
So how, I guess there are a couple of questions. These guys have fiber up to already all of our stations, right?
The fiber is actually provided by AT&amp;T on a contract to DNI. We checked pricing on that contract and that contract pricing is less than the Cal- California state pricing, so seemed appropriate.
So AT&amp;T already has all the, so that other people could have theoretically ended up with a contract with AT&amp;T also to provide the same fiber.
Correct, yes, yes.
And how much, you know, we we obviously have critical services that we need to make sure, you know. All the appropriate communications that's. You know, mission critical happens quickly and is incredibly reliable and backed up and all that, but then I assume we also have a lot of. Less critical, more administrative kinds of things. And, you know, hundred megabits a second, I don't think Comcast actually offers that slow a speed anymore. I think that's literally below their bottom tier now. And so, and especially over fiber, I mean, you can get. A hundred times that much. So I guess I'm, I'm surprised, you know, maybe we don't need that. But did we consider breaking this into two contracts, one for the. You know, all the the back office things and storage and things, but just to have more communications. You could literally, things that weren't required to be. Mission critical, you could have much higher speeds than this. And be able to ship your videos and things back and forth very easily, you know. You know, you can get a hundred megabits a second to your house, much less over fiber for a hundred bucks a month.
A couple of things about that. The a hundred, the services is synchronous, meaning it's a hundred megabits up and a hundred megabits down, so upload, download speeds are the same. And typically residential services are real fast down and slow up.
You're right, mine's only three hundred and fifty up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's three times this. I mean, you know, and it's a hundred bucks a month.
Right. The the other thing about residential services are. And this is true with AT&amp;T and Comcast. Vendors cha- make changes to the configurations of those routers on a regular basis and the residential market, they don't tell you. The problem is we're trying to actually run static route fixed point to point connections across those. And we cannot do that if the vendors are making changes and disrupting service. We've tried this in our other communities using either Comcast or AT&amp;T. Services that are of their lower class. And it just does not work because overnight, they'll make changes, we'll come in, we'll have to reset the equipment. And sometimes we won't even be able to get things to tie back up.
Okay, great.
Question. How does this in package? The services compare cost with what we've had the last three years?
It's it's higher, Gloria, and I don't know the numbers.
Right, I have the the numbers, right. The current year, we are paying one hundred and seventy one thousand, six hundred dollars for the year. So then this is about a four and a half percent increase for to one hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars per year. And then after that, they escalated at three percent per year.
Three years?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would note, Director Jacks, that I just actually participated in a contract renewal for another East Bay client that was at five and a half. Five point one percent. That actually corresponded to the day they released. Salary increases for the prior twelve months, the the national average was five point one percent. Most of our cost increases are salary driven right now.
This is Director Danziger. As far as the transition plan goes, I mean, maybe it's a Gloria and question, but. Have we already started the migration to the new office, three sixty five?
DNI has started planning, but until they have the contract, then we'll get it done by October first is the plan.
Okay. And I I assume Cit- Citrix was the former system?
Citrix was the name of the thin client system that was used before, correct.
And what's the new one called?
Actually, we're going to desktop and laptop computers using Office three sixty five software, yeah.
Oh, okay, so I I see that, okay. And I also know. A new phone system, what what's different from the old one? What what are we doing? Anything?
So no, we ended up, we are not in instituting a new phone system at this time. We're going to maintain the existing phone system.
Oh, okay.
We, I would like to say one thing about that. Cyber insurance carriers are now requiring that all. Equipment be of current vintage. So that the district's in the future going to be required to maintain current vintage equipment, anything that attaches to the network hardware or software. It's because the older stuff you can't get patches for and it's a security risk. So I think those, some of those things will be changing in the near term because the phone system is relatively old. But it's not required to change at this instance.
Do we have, do we use our phone system for our critical, mission critical things or just for communication? Regular, you know. Administrative communication.
Generally, it's administrative in my in my understanding. Chief could probably clarify that a bit. Mostly calls related inspections and things like that in interoffice.
So most big companies or many big companies these days don't use landline based phones for that, they just have everybody have a cell phone.
I I would say that. They don't use landlines, they use what's called voice to web protocol.
No, no, they just use cell phones. Some of the bigger companies in the world don't use landlines anymore.
I think that you'd have a hard time passing nine one one requirements.
Mission critical thing, that's not what I said. Non-mission critical.
Without phones, without phones on desk.
Okay.
I I think the difference, Director Jorgens, might be private business versus government. I think government is mostly landline based. That'd be what I would think.
I'd say.
Nineteen century technology.
I'd say that the difference is. Government sites are relatively fixed and stay fixed for a very long time. The cost benefit analysis of maintaining. Continue fixed services with on premise based phone system actually works out and continues to work out in the favor of. On premise based phone systems. The the cloud based phone system services are actually not as cost effective as premise based systems. We have a telecommunications practice that practices nationally, we look at this all the time.
Yeah, ask ask AT&amp;T how it worked in the Los Angeles earthquake when all their fiber got caught up by the earthquake.
Yeah, that's really, really quite an interesting concern because. You know, they're really, really pushing hard to get rid of all copper and move everything to cellular. But cellular doesn't work in a disaster very well either.
What kind of backhaul they have?
Well, can't get signal on a tower. That's really the first problem.
Gloria, Anna, you gonna continue to have the same contacts at DNI that we have now?
Yes, we'll have the same staffing and contacts from DNI.
That's great. I'm just. And so do they actually, so when when all this gets done, do they actually like. I I see that their office is unpleasant and I mean, do they actually send people to our offices to connect things and do work, do?
Yes, sir, they do. They're, I mean, they're. Among one of the advantages of them being local during the discussion of the contract, they they came and we physically met to discuss. They sent people out to obviously look at the equipment and when there are issues or IT upgrades or patches and so forth. DNI staff and technicians come to our location to to install the the hardware and patches.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Me too.
Thank you. I'll open up public comments on item six point two. Do we have any hands raised, Marcia?
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received written public comment.
Thank you. I will close public comment on agenda item six point two.
And Director, President Donna, I'd make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd make a motion to authorize a contract with DNI for information technology services and fiber connections. For the period October one, twenty twenty two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, with an option to extend for two years.
Thank you, directors. Marcia, can I get a vote, please?
Director Danziger?
Hi.
Director Jack?
Hi.
Director Jorgens?
Hi.
President Donna?
Hi.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you for your presentation, Tom.
You're welcome.
Six point three, adopt resolution twenty two dash twenty one, classifying the various components of fund balance as defined. In governmental accounting standards, board statement number fifty four, and adopting a revised fund balanced policy.
Good evening, directors. The district's fund balance policy requires annual review by the board. The policy has been reviewed along with various risk areas facing the district. The district faces risk in the areas of inflation, rising interest rates, COVID nineteen pandemic. Low inventory levels of housing and business inventory. Drought and fire conditions in California. Necessary capital projects, pension costs and unfunded liabilities. These challenges could affect the district in a number of ways, including increased costs for overtime, mandated sick leave. Pension, apparatus, construction, fuel, utilities and other services and supplies. The existing policy requires the district to maintain a minimum fund balance of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. Of at least seventeen percent of budgeted general fund revenue at fiscal year end. With a goal of achieving a fifty percent year end general fund balance in the long term. Staff recommends the board adopt resolution twenty two dash twenty one, which includes no changes to the current unbalanced policy. This concludes my report.
I will open a public comment on. Agenda item six point three.
We do not have any hands raised or receive written public comment.
Thank you. I will close public comment. On agenda item six point three. Any comments or questions from the directors?
Yes, this is Director Danziger. So I just have a couple of just clarification questions. Having to do with the the components of the fund balance. So as far as. Components of the fund balance that are restricted. So like pension, pension stabilization. I just want to clarify, so that would include pension stabilization fund and the Oped Fund. What would, what what triggers if we had to? What would, what what triggers if we had to u- use that money, I I mean, does it have to come from Socero, or could could the board just decide to to use the money that are in those funds? For those purposes?
Yes, sir, so they, obviously with the appropriate caveat that the expenditures are limited to to the appropriate that means there there is no, um, there there is no currently established trigger, we previously discussed with the board uh, that that at some time, uh, it's certainly at the board's pleasure when that would occur. At some time, it would be helpful to establish a distribution policy, understanding what what event would, um, would trigger a distribution from these events, whether it, um, be a significant increase in the the payment from either OPEB or, um, or OPEB as we go, or, um, or Socero with regard to our pension obligations. Or it could be a significant reduction in, um, in district, uh, revenue. But that that would be for the board to determine, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'd I'd like to, well, down the line a little bit, I'd like to get that on the agenda and talk about it a little bit more. Uh, another question I have is several meetings ago, we talked about, uh, funding, uh, under a capital plan for, um, a a new, uh, station forty one, and we 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 used a number of eight million dollars. And is, I'm just curious, is that eight million dollars in the capital fund, project fund right now?
Right, sorry, no, that, it's not. I mean, that was discussed, but there was no board direction regarding station forty one construction project.
And so is that money, I'm just curious, it's thinking kind of ahead, that money that we talked about for forty one and then for forty five? Those are, those are not in the reserve fund either, right?
So the capital projects fund has money that is committed for capital projects. In addition, this year in the current year budget, it does include a transfer out of the general fund into the capital projects fund. So that money will go into the capital projects fund and it will be committed for future capital projects. I mean, that board has, uh, discretion over the committed money.
Okay.
I think another way to say that is the long range financial plan that we all looked at has a plan for getting that much money into the capital budget over time so that it can be funded as it is. Given there were the assumptions on the long range financial plan.
Right, I was just looking for where, where is the money? Yeah, I I understand that, I understand the plan, so, okay, I got it.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Oh, uh, I I I, and so uh, when we talk about, uh, the fund balance policy of at least seventeen percent and achieving fifty, fifty percent? Does, does those percentages, um, include the a percentage of the funds that we have in pension stabilization or the OPEB fund?
Right, no, it does not include that, the policy explicitly states that it is un, that it is the unrestricted fund balance is what is used to calculate the percentage.
Okay.
And the money that's in the Paris trust funds are restricted.
So does that, I, you know, I'm just thinking about that, I mean, we actually have this whole other pot of money, I just wonder. Well, that that's part of the, okay, we'd have to, that's a whole nother discussion, I would imagine, because we would have to talk about uh, the the policy on the fund balance, to change it, if we wanted to change it, right? If we wanted.
That's the item that's before you right now, is the this, resolution twenty two twenty one adopts the fund balance policy.
Okay.
So that's what's being decided now.
Okay. So I, you know, I just, I just wanted to have a, just a clarification, so not having those not having those, um, fund balances included. Doesn't it under represent the liquidity of the district? I mean, I'm just throwing that out for, for you know, maybe, maybe John and Craig to comment on that as well. I mean, I'm just looking for the basis of why we don't include those. Because they're restricted.
For a different purpose, one is to take into account the risk of Socero, the fact that they have systematically for the last, you know, twenty some years undercharged the district for their pension obligations.
Okay.
And and, you know, so we've gone from having had a fully paid pension back in two thousand and four ish uh, to being, you know, tens of millions of dollars in debt in that, you know, less than twenty years. And so that's the reason, because we know that they are always charging less than they should be because they have rosy assumptions about both how much money they're going to earn and how much they are discounting the future cash flows, we've put aside money so that we can weather that storm because they have had a history, because then when things go bad, they send you a really big bill and there's nothing you can do about it.
Right.
So to level out our cash flows for that, but that's a different thing than saying we want to have reserves in case the economy turns bad or something, that's a different thing.
And the, the money that we have uh, in in the reserves, that's not restricted, right? We can use that however we want.
Exactly.
Totally, so.
And don't forget the money in the reserves is one of the most rosy ways you can think about it because it doesn't reflect the minimum we have in the reserves. It reflects the amount we have in the reserves at the end of our fiscal year. It actually gets much worse than that when we're at our low point waiting for our next tax payment.
Right, right. Okay, uh, thank you.
It's also a way of looking at a guarantee that we're taking care of the employees down the road. That they're gonna get their pension pay paid and their medical taken care of, as promised.
Right, without having to do anything draconian to our existing budget, yes, exactly.
Yep.
Okay, no, I I appreciate that, thank you, Craig. Mike.
The other issue is, you know, I've stated before that, you know, in my view, seventeen percent is inadequate as a goal, or as a, as a minimum. If you look at the sister organizations similar to ours, most of them have in excess of fifty percent, in fact, several of them have probably close to seventy or eighty percent. Seventeen percent is like two months of expenditures. And if we didn't have, if if we fell to that level, I mean, we we would be in real dire financial straits, which is we were in before. When they set it at seventeen percent. Because they, that that's what they had, but at the same time, they had to go through a process of cutting costs and doing other things. If you remember also one of our sister cities, when they fell below fifty percent, they declared a financial emergency, which means they didn't have six months of reserves to cover the period when there was no income. And so, you know, I I I still feel seventeen percent is grossly inadequate. We moved it up to, I think, looks like forty percent or getting close to fifty percent. It seems to me we need to raise that number as a minimum because the minimum is meaningless, minimum says, you know, we're really in the tank. And may not be able to meet our existing obligations.
Except, except, yeah, I I agree, John, except the board is, this board is unanimously unanimously agreed continually to keep adding to the reserve.
But it looks foolish, in my view, that we say seventeen percent is minimum. It isn't never would be adequate.
I don't think we've changed the reserve number unanimously, we might have changed, we might have been agreeing on how much to put in the pension funds, but we haven't changed the reserve number.
Hey, Gloria Ann, do you have an update on what, what our reserves are right now about? I mean, last
Yes, I do, so as of June, it's measured as of June thirty, June thirty, twenty twenty one, so a year ago, at the end of that fiscal year, we were at forty three percent of unrestricted fund balance reserves. And then at June thirty, twenty twenty two, we're still closing the fiscal year, we're still getting more bills and so forth, but I think we are going to hit the fifty percent mark at this end of this fiscal year.
That's outstanding, that we're in pretty good, I that, I, I think that's pretty good for, right, I mean.
Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll be at fifty percent, however, we're looking at a commitment for new station and forty one and forty five. It's gonna probably cost somewhere of ten million dollars. Those monies are gonna come out of the general reserve fund into the capital fund in order to fund those projects. So it may hit fifty percent, but it's not gonna stay at fifty percent. Depending on the timing of the transfer of funds into the capital fund to fund those projects.
Understood.
I think the, in the long range forecast, we were looking at a million dollars next year and three million dollars the following year, and another three million the following year.
John, are you saying we were adding one, three and three?
I think that's.
We were put, we were allocating that much each of those years into the capital fund.
Okay.
Well, um, President Don, I'm ready to make a motion, if you're ready.
Any other, okay, go ahead.
I'm making motion to adopt resolution twenty two dash twenty one, uh, as stated in the, uh, in in the item, uh, six point three. Without, without any changes.
I could second that.
Thank you, Marcia, can we get a vote, please?
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jaxx?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
President Donner?
Aye. Item six point four, approval of unrepresented employee handbook, authorizing salary and benefits for unrepresented employees affected, effective July twenty first, twenty twenty two.
Even Directors, the district has twelve unrepresented employee positions, salaring benefits for unrepresented employees are authorized in the unrepresented employee handbook. Attachments A include as attachment A B, occasionally is necessary for unrepresented employees to work on a holiday, for example, most recently the fourth of July. The handbook states in the event of an employee, an employee is required to work on a holiday, the employee shall receive equal time off to be taken within two months of the holiday. Staff recommends a modification of the handbook to allow payment of overtime for hours worked for non-exempt employees on holidays. Exempt employees will continue to receive equal time off worked, um, exempt employees will continue to receive equal time off for hours worked on a holiday. The annual cost for this change is projected to be five thousand dollars. Additionally, in March twenty twenty two, the board authorized a side letter of agreement with local twelve thirty that authorized unit members to exceed the maximum cumulative vacation hours by up to one week in a fiscal year. Uh, at the end of the fiscal year, the difference between the vacation hours cap and the vacation balance not to exceed one week shall be converted to a retiree health savings account contribution using the member's hourly base rate on the district's currently publicly available salary schedule. In order to maintain parity among employees, staff recommends extending this benefit to unrepresented employees. The annual cost for this project, for this change is projected to be four thousand dollars. The attached handbook has been updated to include these changes, as well as the new fire inspector plans examiner position has been added to the handbook, and additional minor administrative changes have also been made. Changes are shown in blue and attachment A for transparency, and just as an example, Directors, with the, on the fourth of July, we certainly could use the help and, uh, we would have had plenty of things for the, um, specialists to do, uh, if they had been available, but under the current, um, structure, we could offer them days off, uh, an additional day off for coming into work on the fourth of July, but we couldn't pay them overtime. Um, you know, unsurprisingly, offering an employee the opportunity to come in and work on a major holiday when there are other things they could do, um, versus taking a weekday off later on, is is not particularly tantalizing. I I think our use of our resources would be better served by having the flexibility to offer those employees overtime on the few times a year that we can use the, uh, the additional personnel to help out with, um, high impact events such as the fourth of July. And I should note, the subsequent, uh, or the the next agenda item, uh, will address the side letter of agreement, um, recommendation for, uh, the battalion chiefs group as well to bring parity among all of our labor groups and unrepresented employees with regard to, uh, retiree healthcare.
Thank you, Chief. Marcia, I will open up public comment on item six point four.
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Thank you, I will close public comment on agenda item six point four. Uh, Directors, any comments or questions regarding six point four?
I guess I see the, um, the first part of this, you know, the overtime, et cetera, seems reasonable, practical, et cetera. Uh, as far as the, uh, that we have, you know, this isn't what all, this is a represented group and and we have traditionally kept them in line with what twelve thirty got. And so, because twelve thirty was already given that, I think, I guess it makes sense to, uh, to extend that to these folks. But, but basically because they are unrepresented, it makes sense to do that, my opinion.
I'm in agreement with that. Any other comments from any of the Directors?
I'll move that we approve six point four as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Directors. Marcia, can I get a vote, please?
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Jaxx?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
President Donner?
Aye. Item six point five, approval of side letter of agreement between Maragorinda Fire Protection District and Maragorinda Fire Chiefs Officers Association to amend section three C retiree health savings account provisions to provide additional retiree health savings account provisions.
And before I begin, in the interest of transparency, Directors, as a general statement, I received the same benefits as the battalion chiefs and I did want to make sure that was recognized, or that was acknowledged before I began the item. In March twenty twenty two, the board authorized a side letter of agreement with local twelve thirty that authorized unit members to exceed the maximum cumulative vacation hours by up to one week, fifty six hours in a fiscal year. At the end of the fiscal year, the difference between the vacation hours cap and the vacation balance not to exceed one week shall be converted to a retiree health savings account contribution using the member's hourly base rate on the district's currently publicly available salary schedule. In order to maintain parity among employees, staff recommends extending this benefit to Maragorinda Fire Chief Officers Association employees. Side letter of agreement has been prepared to have this benefit, which is included as attachment A, projected annual cost is four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Chief. I will open up public comment on item six point five.
We do not have any hands raised or receive written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia, I will close public comment on agenda item six point five. Any comments or questions from the Directors?
Yeah, I guess my comment would be the same this time as it was when twelve thirty brought this up and Vince was on the phone. Uh, this was a negotiated item with twelve thirty, uh, that was taken off the table as part of a negotiation. And to, and then subsequently brought up guess, by those same people after the negotiations were closed and signed and being paid. And, uh, you know, majority of the board, not including me and not only John, voted for it at that point. Uh, and I have the same feeling about this as I did before, it should have been part of a negotiation. Uh, and I'm not in favor of giving something that, you know, to a bargaining group that wasn't bargaining.
Any other comments from any of the other Directors?
Um, I I I just wanted to know, where does the, the cost of four thousand come in? Is that an administrative fee that we get charged, uh, by the vendor?
No, sir, that's an estimated cost of the, and it's an estimate because it it's unknowable. How many employees will take advantage, uh, of the benefit, um, and then, and at what amount? But, uh, that's based on an estimate of of how much, how many employees are within max accruals. Uh, they obviously have to exceed max accruals before this program would kick in.
Okay.
And and Chief, just, uh, this, this has possible, if if a member decides to use this and put his money Put his money in his their money in the health savings account. This could be some small savings to the district, correct? I mean, if they're not taking a vacation day, they're not we're not backfilling with overtime.
Yes, sir. So if if a member used the the money in lieu of taking overtime, which therefore did not result in a time and a half position being filled. The the district would be paying out the vacation at straight time versus time and a half in the case of a backfill.
Okay, so it's it's a way it's a way for a member to put away for future medical costs. And possible some little savings for the district.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have one hand raised now.
Thank you, Marsha.
Jacob Arrola.
Hello, Jacob.
And thanks for taking my. I wanted to just. There was some misrepresentation of the facts on the negotiations and. Process is already challenging with a lot of interference by negotiators and such, but the reality is this benefit was really. Taken away from what was once a fully funded medical in retirement. And then this program was kind of given in lieu of that succession. So once given back, now we go to the details of how to fund it and you can fund in this group that we have of as a twelve thirty fifty plus people, we have to do it. On equitable basis, so we all have to contribute a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, whatever it is, has to be equal amounts amongst all the members. And through our own discussions internally, we thought a vacation hour. Once it exceeds the limit would be reasonable. So when I hear a director say that this is an unnegotiated item that then got renegotiated. It was a continuation to clarify that, and I think that it is a very like unlikely that many people would benefit from this. It's mostly for people on. Long term disability and stuff like that. So if there's any questions specific to the history or the usage of this, I think that's really relevant. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to comment on that. I specifically went back and talked to our chief negotiator that was with twelve thirty. And I guess maybe you weren't in that discussion, but I don't know. They specifically looked back at their notes and this was specifically an item that was negotiated with twelve thirty, taken off the table as part of the negotiation. And was specifically not an ongoing negotiation according to our chief negotiator that we hired from the outside. I have it in writing if you'd like it. Jacob.
I don't know if Jacob is still on the line, Director Jorgens.
I I am. That's impossible. It wasn't discussed. We hadn't picked a plan, so there's zero chance that this plan was taken off. The table months before we even accepted what the plan was.
You're talking about twelve thirty?
Yeah, yeah, we decided in March what we're going to do. And you're just talking about stuff that happened in November earlier. So I think it's confusion.
It's not confused.
You seem to be confused as.
There was never any. There was never any extra funding. This costs money. There was never any discussion of this point. How were we going to set? The only thing left to be discussed was the particular vendor we were going to use and how that was going to be set up. And you guys had the union was sent off to approve how they unanimously had to approve doing this or not.
We're using our accruals to fund it. It's our money.
Okay. If it's not, if it's not anything that needs our approval, then then it must not have been already agreed.
That was a discretion by administration.
I guess my point is, if we don't approve this, then if you're saying it doesn't cost anything, it shouldn't need any approval. I would encourage you to go do it.
We would not.
My point is, it couldn't have been part of the negotiation if it's still. We signed a contract. The contract had its terms in it. We signed it. We lived by it. And this is something that clearly wasn't within that contract, so it must have been a subject of negotiation.
It hadn't been fully vetted out.
That's not what our chief negotiator says. I will send you her memo.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
I move we don't approve this.
Second.
That is that a motion? I mean. So what's your motion? I mean that we don't approve it?
Yeah.
But.
Well, I would move that we do approve it since we gave this to the members.
That's not one of your choices right now. You have to take a vote on something that's been moved and seconded.
What? Well, is it is?
So you can't even discuss it anymore. Once it's been moved and seconded, you can't discuss it. You have to vote on it.
Okay, then, Marsha, let's take a vote.
Director Dan Ziger.
I'd like to call the question. What what are we voting on? I want to hear it really clearly.
Not approving item six point five.
So. A yes vote would be to not approve it and a no vote would be to approve it.
Well, no, a no vote is just not to not approve it. That's different.
Well, just so I'm clear, Director Jorgens, a no vote would mean that we're in disagreement with what you're proposing.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Marsha, can you do a vote, please?
Director Dan Ziger.
No.
Director Jex.
Yes.
Director Jorgens.
Yes.
President Donner.
No.
President Don, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the side letter of agreement between. M O Maragorinda Fire Protection District and Maragorinda Fire Chief Association Officers Association to amend. Section three C retirement health savings account provisions to provide additional retiree health savings account provisions.
I'll second. We're all clear. Marsha, can we get a vote, please?
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
No.
Director Jorgens.
No.
President Donner.
Yes.
So both motions fail.
I I'd like to see this item carried over to be on the next agenda as well.
Okay. Again, item six point six, adopt resolution twenty two dash twenty four, amending the district conflict of interest code.
Even directors, a local government agency is required by statute to adopt a conflict a conflict of interest code that includes provisions designating the positions within the agency required to report certain report certain financial interests, the manner of reporting those financial interests and standards for when. The employees will be disqualified participating in the making of certain decisions. Non inflective interest codes must specifically list positions that make or participate in making decisions for or on behalf of the district. Typically, positions that involve voting on matters, negotiating contracts, or making recommendations on purchases without substantive review must be included in codes. A primary purpose of the code is to require disclosure of those types of investments, interest in real property, sources of income, and business positions that designated positions may affect in their decision making. At a regular board meeting on September sixteenth twenty twenty, the Board of Directors adopted resolution twenty dash thirteen, a resolution of the Maragorinda Fire Protection District of Contra Costa County, adopting a conflict of interest code. The required by any overview of the conflict of interest code has been conducted and determined one position be added with associated disclosure categories to the list of designated positions in the code. In accordance, section I of resolution twenty two dash twenty four, amending the district conflict of interest code and section two of the conflict of interest code have been amended to add one new position of fire inspector plans examiner. No other changes were made to the code. Attached to the staff report is both a clean version of the proposed code to be adopted and a redline version to allow the board of directors to see what changes have been made from the district's existing code.
Thank you, chief. I will open up public comment on item six point six.
We do not have any hands raised or received written public comment.
Thank you, Marsha. I will close public comment on agenda item six point six.
I move we adopt resolution twenty two dash twenty four, many of the district conflict of interest code.
I I I, before we run, I'm sorry, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So and just looking at the designated positions. I see on the list that the board of directors are the only, I believe, the only non paid or volunteer people on that list. I was wondering about the people in the the CERT program. Particularly the CERT, I I don't know their exact titles, but like, you know, Duncan Seaford and 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 Julie in those positions. Are they in the position at all to to, you know, come underneath this code?
No, sir. They're not district employees and they have no district purchasing authority or ability to to either make a purchasing decision or weigh in on them.
Okay. So and 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 so I don't see any. So I I'm just going to ask because I don't see it on the list either. Is is no captains? There's no captain that's in that position as well?
No, sir.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I had.
Thank you, Director Dan Ziger. Director Jorgens, you were gonna motion, please?
Yep, adopters, I move that we adopt resolution twenty two dash twenty four, many of the district conflict of interest code.
I'll second. Marsha, can we get a vote, please?
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens.
Hi.
President Donner.
Hi. There we go. Thank you, Marsha. Committee reports. Audit committee.
We did not meet and nothing, as far as I know, nothing to report, John, anything?
Right.
Thank you. Seven point two, East Bay Wildfire Prevention and Vegetation Management Joint Powers Agency Meetings.
But I've continued to to meet with the smaller working group. We've moving towards a meeting in September with fire code officials and elected officials to review a proposed. County wide model code that Fire Marshal Isaacs has been developing with the remainder of the fire protection officers from throughout the county. We've also been engaged in in conversations around that meeting associated with extending. That same fire code to Marin County and to portions of Alameda County, which would be a significant achievement. The the intent of the meeting is to give elected officials and the fire code officials an opportunity to discuss essentially. What there is support for and then to give, having informed those elected officials and the process having been informed by those elected officials. And giving them an opportunity to go back to their full boards of the various entities that adopt or ratify the fire code to advocate on its behalf.
Thank you for the update, chief. Seven point three. Station forty one ad hoc committee. We have nothing to report. Seven point four joint fire prevention ad hoc committee with the city of Arinda, that is myself and Director Jorgens. Director Jorgens, you want to talk about our meeting?
I I think we had a pretty productive meeting. The city of Arinda has been making good progress, I think, on. On implementing their major R and. Coordinating reasonably well with the fire district about, you know, how to staff that, what things to focus on. And they've just recently, the city council has passed a four hundred thousand dollar grant program resolution, which they're still having to implement and figure out, you know, how how to make it sure it's all legal and things, but good. The good news is we already have one for MOFD that they can hopefully use as a model along with others. And they are in the process of hiring some additional people to actually, as they call it, boots on the ground to go out and, you know, knock on door, not just, you know, sort of PR. Kinds of things to actually knock on doors and encourage people to to meet their obligations to meet the fire code. And I think they're planning of being. Very systematic about how they implement. The spending of the money for a major R, but also how they encourage people on a on sort of a block by block, starting in the north of the city and along evacuation routes. Making sure that they incent people to meet the fire code and then coordinate with the fire district to sort of follow up with the 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 ticket book to make sure that they. Citation books, sorry, chief, to make sure that they actually do. Implement, you know, the the necessary work to get the fire to meet the fire code and that way that we'll end up with a much larger buffer. Starting in the north part of Arinda and working our way south is one way they're proposing doing it. And just have, you know, so if we have an amber shower, there won't be any receptive fuel beds to to receive that. So I think there's. I think it's been a good way for MOFD to interact with the senior management in the city of Arinda and with the city manager. To have them learn a lot more about, because I think we're still way ahead of them as far as thinking about these things appropriately, because it's our business. But I think they are learning fast and I think they're implementing things and they have a strong desire to do the right thing.
They're they're eager to spend the money quickly and wisely.
Exactly. And there was also a lot of talk about the firewise, you know, getting more people to be firewise neighborhoods and implement that, but I think there was a strong belief that that is a great way to. Get the communities knowledgeable, to add peer pressure to getting things done, to add organization. You know, that's a lot more boots on the ground, neighborhood by neighborhood that can really, you know, leverage the the knowledge of a few and implement it with many.
Yep, I would I would agree. I would say the last meeting was fruitful and we're eager to meet again and. Continue the discussion and and get some get some new policies in place for this measure.
Yep, it's been a very good committee.
Yep.
They at yesterday's last night's council meeting, they probably talked about your meeting and and the possibility of. Incentive programs or or something else, probably talked about it for an hour. So it's 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 ongoing. You're you're right. And they're coming up with some some pretty good ideas on how to how to assist.
Good.
Okay, we'll move on to the next slide, please, Marsha. Thank you. I'll open up public comment on agenda items seven point one through seven point four.
We do not have any hands raised or received written public comment.
Thank you, Marsha. We'll close public comment on agenda items seven one through seven four. Eight point one, future agenda items. Director Dan Zinger, you wanted to put six point six point five on the next.
Yes.
Okay. Director, any other directors have any, excuse me, any requests for future agenda items? Okay, hearing none. I think that's a wrap of the meeting.
I move you during the meeting.
Second that motion.
Okay, do we vote on that?
Yep.
Yep. Marsha, can we get a vote, please?
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens.
Hi.
President Donner.
Hi. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.